Hey, everybody. Welcome to another poker coachers study session. Here we're studying hundred big blinds deep cash, mostly hundred big blinds deep. There's also going to be some broken stacks. These are real hands with real villains and we know all their cards because we're special. All right, let's take a look. Let's take a look at a hand. Oh, here we go. We are heads up. And King, queen should I? I don't know heads up ranges at all, but king, queen clearly should raise and eight, nine suited should clearly call. Raise, call. All right. Um, this is a donkable board. Um, and eight, nine suited. Seems like a really good handed donk with this board. But I'm not that good.
Big blind, that is the difference.
Uh, yeah, it's well, it's heads up. So who knows what, what is what? Check, check. All right. Well, that is not a good donkable card. And that's good fold. All right. Here we go. Now it's going to turn into something. Jacks should raise, queen, nine should fold. He does. All right. Six, nine should fold, jack should raise and ace three should not fold. Ace three should mix three betting and calling, I think here. That's the old poker coaching range. We'll look, we'll take a look at what the uh uh wizard range is in a second. Here we go. But there's the raise, there's the call. Let's do a quick look at the wizard here. Folds around to small blind raises, sorry, folds around to small blind. Who raises? And the big blind there with his ace three, the wizard says lots and lots of re-raising. Here. But he didn't break the solver with his call. Right, playing on. Uh, ace three is gonna have to lose some more money. Bottom pair here, bottom pair does some, does some, does some bluffing here, right?
Probably, yes.
Yeah. Bottom pair, top kicker, no, no backdoors. So he benefits a lot from folds. The next card can't be good for him. This seems like a reasonable bet and if he bets, it's a bet, it's a small bet. There doesn't seem to be a reason to do this. It's a big bet is my guess. He does the half pot because he isn't sure between small and big. Jacks should not fold and should not check raise. Here we go. Seven comes. Now he is just purely marginal made.
He has the ace of spades, that's how he can represent spade.
So, and if you were to do that, do you want to wait till the river to do it or do you want to do it now?
I don't know.
I mean, here's the thing. If you check now and then the spades come in on the river and you bet big, how believable is that? Because if you had two spades, wouldn't you, wouldn't you bet? When you picked up this extra equity? So I guess if he's gonna bluff the river.
Most of the time, yes, but not always. I mean, you can bet all your spades.
Yep. But he goes for it. Half pot again.
That, that's not a bad, that's not a bad.
Yeah, because that's not the size you would do. The jacks go along. And now it didn't get there. I think, I think now. Well, his give up just became very easy when he, when the jacks block bet for 50%. But he doesn't feel that way.
It's, it's a very strange bet of jacks.
Yeah, yeah. It's a very strange bet of jacks. It's a very strange bluff of ace three to me. And it works.
At least he's blocking a set.
Yeah. Do we want to look at this hand since everything was in range or we want to just move on and go, oh, that's how people play?
Uh, this is how people play, I mean.
All right, good enough. Yeah, I think, I think the donk with the jacks at the end is, well, first of all, if he's gonna do it, the size was the wrong size, I think. It should be blocked betting it.
It's a fine.
Or not.
Just check call.
Yeah, I check call seems much better. Yeah. All right. Here we go.
If the weird line, why would you check call?
Queen, jack suited should raise, ace, queen should not have posted and should three bet him. Uh, and the nine should fold to the three, should fold to that three bet. But that's not what's gonna happen.
Limp.
Well, he's gonna first, he's only gonna go to two. Oh, no, it is what's gonna happen. All right, great.
So did you post? You posted, right?
Yeah, he posted.
Seven is gone.
That's me. Oh, 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 here's my excuse for posting. All right, it's me. I posted. Why do I do this? Um, with this many players. Um, I think Yeah, in the cutoff, I think it's, I think it's just, it just as good as paying your big blind and your small blind to get the button to pay one big blind in position. So I'm gonna defend this post as the one time that I think it's worth posting.
Not that bad, mate.
Anybody want to call me a fish for it? Since I was about to call the guy who did it a fish for doing it?
Um, well, since you are the alpha. It's a great play.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we? I'll go with my initial thing of saying that uh the cutoff is a fish and I don't, and I would never do that. Moving on. But I like that. I do like that.
Yeah, I think this is interesting because I mean, you, you have, you just happen to look at a great hand here and so it's interesting to see what's gonna happen. Now, before going further.
Very bad, yes.
Guys, what are you doing with nines here? Nines are very interesting here because uh, UTG villain has got an uncapped range and is R five. Um, if he goes over the top, all of a sudden that's seven big blinds you're throwing away.
Yeah.
And then on his sizing. What are you guys doing with nines here?
I would call and my reason would be they don't fold bad enough.
Yeah, I think that's valid.
So you're gonna be in there. You're gonna be in there multi-way with nines. Oh, go on, skate.
No, I was just gonna say that we are just barely getting the direct implied odds to set mine with nines. Um, and maybe not even yeah, with this sizing, so yeah, went open through. Yeah, I think I'm out of here with nine.
But we can look at our direct odds. Our direct odds are 27% and our equity is 24%, so we aren't getting direct odds, but this hand is all about implied odds.
Yeah, because it's gonna be really, really hard to win this hand with nines. Um, unimproved against three players. Uh, you know, just the runouts have to be so, there's so many cards we have to dodge.
But I would say the 12% of the time that you think a non multi-way here, it's very valuable.
Yeah, even, even, even out of position, you're gonna get a lot of money in.
Yeah.
With a bit of multi-way.
And a lot of flops, go check, 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 check because no one hits.
Well, I mean, can we like get less uh, direct, I like direct odds? When we set mine because there's so many players or?
Well, we could see. I mean, we could see what our direct odds are, right?
Because I would assume I need at least 100, you know, everybody to have. Um, or the, the original raiser to have at least, you know, 110? Or at least
No, 100 is fine. 100 is fine.
Or about 100.
Well, no, out of position, but, but nines, but here's the thing, heads up, nines are pretty good. To, you know, on their own. Okay, so one, two, one, two, three, four, five. So this is what, this is what this guy says to it.
Yeah, you're not, it's gonna be harder. Get GTO wizard to pop right here.
Yeah, because the button isn't gonna have any calls.
Easier for Yos to pull something up like this on GTO base.
Yeah, you're right. I'll let you work on that. Yeah, there's just no calls there is the problem. But without the intervening call, nines are a sliver. So I don't think that they improve that much with that extra call.
So the button, against, against one pre-flop raiser, the button can call, but against like one caller in between, it does not.
Yeah, but the assumption is that they are not fold betting enough, otherwise you just fold.
Yeah. What, what, do you have a, do you have a, did you pick up something on GTO base that was interesting, Yos?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right, let's just move on then. Okay, so let's see.
I think I already had a lot of subscription, so I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I think I'd do the same.
Yeah, so he calls.
It's, I don't know. I think it's okay. I think it's, I think the implied odds are so great against in a four-way to pot with a, with a pair, I think that's worth it.
Yeah, I mean, he's just, he's just put in, you know, he's well, there's that.
Now it's gonna get interesting. Now this is gonna be the interesting hand of the day here.
Right.
Although it doesn't occasionally get that much action, frankly, but you don't.
Wait for the turn. Wait for the turn.
Don't dunk, sir.
I mean, that's what I was thinking, you know, not considering the flop, I mean, we, maybe since we're not getting, I mean, if we're not getting the, the exact, you know, exact direct implied odds, then maybe it could like be.
Skate, I feel like you're mixing up direct. So you're, you're saying direct implied odds? But that doesn't, it's kind of confusing for me because they're, they're very separate things, right? And it's important in your head to have them separate. Because direct odds are one concept and implied odds are another. Direct odds are a math equation.
Yeah, you're right. I keep saying, so, so let me correct myself, so. Um, a direct odds to set mine.
They are, it's not direct odds to set mine.
Direct, okay, whatever.
You set mine because of implied odds.
Okay, then, okay, so implied odds, I learned something new. So again, um, even though we're not maybe getting the exact correct implied odds to set mine, then, I mean, considering there is like, you know, more than two players, we could go ahead and call.
Yeah, well, let's look at his, let's look at his equity here. Can you go back to flop real quick, Scotty?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think.
If we might look to Scotty's, he still was. Yeah, so you can look at his, his equity here. He's got, he's now, there's one card to come on turn and he's got full equity. He's got, he's got the pot locked.
Sorry.
So you could, you know, this is the value of flopping a set. Can we, uh, Scotty, can we go back to flop and look at his? Oh, he's, he's making some changes. Scotty, are you back with us?
I'm back with us. Yeah, yeah, I'm back with you.
Mr. Alpha going back to the flop where we can see the equity he has. Four ways here with his flop set.
His equity is he's got 29% before he hits his flop, then he flops the set.
Now, so this is the value of a set, skate.
Yeah.
He now essentially has 90% equity against four other hands and you know, it wouldn't really, he wouldn't have that much less equity if someone hit. If someone hit a pair. Because if that person hits trips, then you've got a house. This is the value of, this is the value of a set.
Yeah, the only person who's got anything against you is, is this guy go with his backdoor flush and his backdoor straight.
Yeah.
You know? And the seven, this guy's got a backdoor straight, you know, for 2%.
The ace also.
Right. Now, the question is, his, his initial check is great. This jack comes.
Now, this is interesting.
Right.
I think you gotta put money in. Look at all these draws.
Not a lot.
He's gotta put money in. But he's the problem is he chases out his only customer.
Yeah, he's too big. This is too big. I agree with you. This should be this should be 10.
Yeah.
Maybe less.
Yeah.
No more than 10.
Gotta give, he's gotta invite that jack queen.
Have a crying call of even king, queen or something like that.
Yeah.
And I would say this is a super this is a super nitty fold.
Yeah.
I mean, this guy this guy's got, he just folded top pair.
Top pair.
To one, that's really nitty.
It is unfortunate for the nines that the one person who hit anything was not closing the action.
Yeah, so you gotta go, yeah, so maybe you go small. What size are you guys using here? Maybe 10 is too big.
10, 10. 10 seems good.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, there's a lot of draws available. I think 10 is fine.
Well, the only draws for me are it's gonna, it's gonna be the flush draw because I don't think anybody's floating, uh, uh, raised pot with me 10.
There is no, there is no float. There was no bet on the flop. There's no floating here. So queen 10 suited?
A, a pre-flop.
Yeah, this queen, jack suited could easily be queen 10. Um, my three bet is not queen 10 suited there, but
King seven of hearts.
Yeah.
Yeah, king seven of clubs, yeah, but king seven shouldn't be there. I mean, that's, that's so out of.
Yeah, I don't know why king seven is there, but whatever.
I mean, and also you're there is also an argument that you just want to get. As, I mean, so our hero Nick would argue this has always got to be a big bet because you gotta get money in.
Yeah.
But I think, I think in theory generally sizing is smaller multi-way.
Yeah, sizing is smaller multi-way. Yep, all right. And smizing, but sizing is also bigger when, when it goes check, check on the flop.
Yeah, yeah.
Ace, queen should raise and take it. But he raises really small. Which may bring the threes in. It does. Ace 10 should not participate in this.
Jack 10 in.
Right. And the jack 10 shouldn't participate. The ace five definitely shouldn't be here. Um, the jack 10 shouldn't be here, but there's a chance he will be. And now the seven, five shouldn't be here, but I'll bet he will be. Okay, good, good for him to get out of there. Right? Um, in this super multi-way, it should just check around.
Yeah, and three should have the best hand here most of the time.
Yeah, but he's not gonna make it. Threes are gonna have to fold.
Yeah, no, I spoke to have a lot of nines, only over pairs, so call it.
This is, this is a crazy raise. This is crazy.
Yeah, so I, so once again, I don't understand how people play poker, obviously. I do not know my opponents and do not know the proper way.
And you don't, didn't hit the nine, so I have the best hand.
No, this guy's just crazy. He's just, he's just a maniac.
No, I mean, that, the Yos' thing is um, that he's doing this against all the villains, everything, this works against everything but villains, aces, kings, queens, jacks and tens.
Yeah. Well, flush draws too. It's, oh, yeah, and um I think also some people play street poker here and are saying this bet's really small. He's doesn't have thick value.
You don't need to go big.
You mean the two or the seven?
Um, I think the threes are exploitatively saying this guy bets small.
Yeah, right.
And so he doesn't have thick value, so I'm going to do this.
Yeah.
Why did you actually raise pot there? I would always check there.
You mean call, you'd always call?
Oh, I would check, uh.
On the ace queen.
Um, yeah, I'm surprised ace queen.
Oh, the ace queen is a bad, the ace queen's a bad bet, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bad one.
Not only a bad.
You have two big cards, so you don't mind seeing a, a flop.
I mean, he's, he's got, he's got the queen diamonds, which is okay, but I mean, bedfold is like, is the worst. He, he, um.
I agree with Mike.
Continuing like as played, he should continue to that rate. Maybe. Especially after the rest of the, uh, full fold. I just think it's a bad fold with, with two overs. By the way, I, I sent the screenshot of the, the range.
Uh, that's, that's another thing. But you can call.
Yeah. Um, yeah, kink me off on the range that I sent is folded actually under the gun, which is maybe a little tight, but maybe correct in live.
Depends on rake structure, I reckon.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on rake structure and also often do you think the population you're playing against, table you're playing against is going to three.
Yeah, not, not often.
So here's what I like about the threes in this hand. Um, if he correctly ranges, you know, that the, the ace queen saying that is never a nine at that size. Um, therefore this guy is, is such a problem. He knows if he calls behind, he's not gonna make it to the river. He's inviting the other people in, he's inviting a raise, uh, you know, squeeze here.
Yeah.
And if, once he makes this seven, if there's any action behind, he knows he's dead.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, it's gangster. I don't, I'm not finding it and it works, so. Maybe, maybe I'm missing exploitative raiser.
Yeah. All right, let's see. The ace three posted and unlike my post, which was classy, this is too far back to get that advantage. It's only here. Okay, having said that, um, uh, when folded around to the ace three who's posted, he might want to raise this. If he doesn't, the ace 10 should definitely ISO him. All right, let's see what happens. Nope, come on ace 10, ISO. Good, good ISO sized. Um, everybody needs to fold to that ISO and so should the ace three. There we go. Well played. Uh, ace, jack should raise, queen 10?
That's, I think it's a three-bet or fold.
Um, yeah.
Mostly fold.
Mostly fold, yeah. It's, it's the word.
Maybe queen jack, yeah. Yeah, although I wouldn't be surprised to see him call here, uh, extra big from an ace jack. Let's check this guy 703 and see if 3.5 is his regular size or if that's, um, hand related. Um, I wouldn't be surprised to see this queen 10 suited call. But fold is the best move. So, because I really understand how these people play. That's what I'm saying. Maybe not the last hand, but these people, right, queen 10 calls, um.
I have suited Broadway.
Yeah.
Yeah, both these king actually fold.
Yeah, I mean, everybody else should fold.
King eight is can make a, a bluff squeeze.
Yeah.
But mostly she'll fold.
I, I, yeah, I could see, if you're gonna do that bluff squeeze, I, my minimum is gonna be king nine.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you want to have the straight to the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Want to be on the button.
Right, you want to be on the button. And I wouldn't mind, and, and once it gets to king 10, it's kind of, kind of good. Okay, here we go. Uh, queen 10 outflops him, but not with a hand that he can have any faith in, um.
I wonder if villain 703 can ever XR.
Um.
He's got an over, a touch shot, a backdoor flush, so.
I don't, I don't think he needs to with this hand. But, um.
It's also check call.
I would, I would. I would, yeah, what would you do if you get, if he's imposition playing bets?
Um, if I check here, I think I just call, realize my equity, oh, a whole bit of spade. Well, I don't know, uh, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, and depending on how big he bets also.
Yeah.
That can be good.
Yeah, let's see. Do over range though? Do you think that the ace, jack position checks range?
Yeah, so this is off, this is off the charts because we're not getting any flats from this position.
Right.
But I think generally the theory is the closer a position the imposition flatter is to you, the more that we check, right? Because the extreme example is cutoff versus button flat. Where we're checking 80% of range. However, if you look at low jack versus button, we have a lot more c-bets range versus range against button flat. So I think here I would check a lot and I think, I think I would XR this hand at a certain frequency.
I, I, I guess.
He goes, he goes the other way.
I agree. I kind of agree with that, but um, maybe not check raising, maybe just check call.
That is a lot of pressure on the queen.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, Phil has, of course, the opener has more ace king.
He's thinking the same thing. I'm thinking I've got a lot of backdoor equity here and an over. Instead of XR-ing it, he's choosing to he's choosing to lead.
Thing is, I would never.
I guess it is.
I would never make the c-bet. I mean, c-bets are usually 33, 50%. I mean.
Now, this is, this is way, this is not really something you see a lot in theory.
Yeah, exactly.
In fact, I don't think you ever see the size in theory.
Just to finish my point, I was just gonna say that this large sizing is kind of weakish, like it's like saying, hey, I don't want to get called. Yeah.
The weird one.
Although, couldn't you, couldn't you see somebody do this?
Yeah, I mean, on the flop.
Couldn't you see someone do this with pocket sevens? Or with ace, king, I mean, some strong hands here. That, that look at this board and go, this board is so draw heavy. I don't mind. I really want to deny equity.
I don't know.
I mean, we could look at low jacks c-bet range on this texture against button. We wanted to.
Right. Although he's not low jack, he's low jack minus one.
Yeah, I mean, it's and, and also, yeah, and obviously this is a button imposition player.
Do we ever bet pot?
Works. But I think, you know, Skate, you have a good point. I mean, this is, this looks very it's polarizing, right? It's full of junk and it's full of thick value.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's take a look at this hand.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do low jack and we'll, and we'll put the, we'll put the queen 10 suited on the button.
Yeah, because I, I've encountered these bets before, like especially live and when it's, you know, I don't know.
I think the thing here is that it's king, queen, so you have more top pair, top kicker. And that's maybe part of the range can bet big.
I mean, one argument is to think about who you're.
I wouldn't be surprised.
That big bet, I mean, to me, it's either a flush draw or nothing. That, that's, that's, that's what it screams to me.
What about sets?
I'll find out. Let's find out.
Um, maybe player dependent. Uh, I mean, are sets ever betting pot on the flop? I don't think so.
Are you putting it in, Larry?
I am.
Okay, good.
One second, guys. Queen of spades, seven of clubs, king of spades.
There you go. I'm stopping my share.
Um, okay, I'm gonna share. Yeah, so in this configuration, low jack, UTG, low check.
Yep.
Slash UTG versus button. Yeah, we're betting a lot. Um, but we're only betting small. So um, we can look at, we can look at ranges, like, yeah, we've just got a range advantage on this board.
That's what I'm saying, we're never betting big.
So the other question is, do we XR this combo?
By the way, let me just say, we're never betting big except for the one, the, the two hands we said. Look at that, pocket sevens, bet's big. Ace, jack, ace, jack has a little bit of that big bet in it.
Yeah.
Uh, let's do it this way.
So it's not a bad thought to have.
Oh, ace, jack does have some.
But it's not, but it's not that big. It's 50%. It's not, it's not this, he, he bet.
Pot.
Um, he bet pot basically. Yeah, so no, that's not.
It's mostly coming from the sevens.
Yeah, that's not a thing.
Um, clear. Let's see, let's see where XRs are. So if we check.
It's about to think, yeah, not to the X.
And his most common bet size is polarizing on this board, which is B75. We're not gonna have a lot of XRs against this sizing. So B75. Let's see if it all, yeah, yeah, we don't have check raises against that sizing.
Ace seven. And certainly not with our ace check. Yeah, we just don't have them. Ace seven.
And queens, the sliver. And kings, ace king.
Yeah, sliver.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we have a little bit more here.
Not solved fully, so then, uh.
So, but, yeah, but once, yeah, if we, if you bet small, which really isn't a thing, then we get some with our ace check.
Yeah.
What do you think opponent does once he bets this big and, and he calls, he think he shuts down on the turn, been in seven oh three.
He, I think the ace check shuts down unless, unless he improves, he's gotta get, he's gotta get an ace, he's gotta get the straight. Or he's gotta pick up a, or he's gotta pick up a spade and feel good about the spade he picks up. Like a tenant, yeah, but actually, he's not gonna feel that good about any spade, so. I think, I think that's the point of this bet.
The other phone does have a lot of kings.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yep, I think it's a one, I think the bet is a one and done bet.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Were you saying, Yost, that imposition player has a lot of king X?
Uh, imposition player has a king X.
Okay.
Not a lot.
Right, uh, so ten Jack should raise. Queen ten suited, could three bet him, and ace ten, and ace two suited should call if the queen ten suited doesn't three bet. Alright, there's the raise to just two. I, I hate that call, having made that call, I would not hate queen ten doing an off the reservation, uh, call here.
I would three bet, uh, queen ten, maybe.
That'd be nice, squeeze would be better, squeeze would be better.
The fourteen.
Yeah.
Alright, let's squeeze, let's see, six, eight, nine, ten, yeah, it seems too small, um. Should be.
This is not.
Twelve.
Five times.
Yeah, yeah, it should be twelve or, it should be twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, you really want to generate folds here, in this position.
He didn't even get the big blind to fold. So, and once that guy's in, I think the ten Jack, I think at this point, the ten Jack can absolutely flip eight big blinds into this.
Yeah, this gets weird, yeah, I agree, makes sense.
Yeah.
Can do both.
So like, and the games you play, are, are villains this, this good? Like, are they studied where they're gonna see this pot and three bet most of the time with a mortgage on hand in the small blind?
They're exactly this good, they're gonna see it, they're gonna three bet, but they're gonna three bet too small.
Okay.
They're good enough to three bet, but not good enough to execute it properly.
In my, in my playbook, you have some people that three bet like twenty percent of the time, so.
Twenty percent, you said?
Twenty percent or more even, and you have players that only three bet four percent of the time.
Yeah, cuz Yas plays with Nick. Alright. I don't hate that. Alright. Except this happens.
That's the reason I would say Jack ten can also fold.
Yeah, yep, that's true.
Well, he's probably thinking nobody has a stakes, maybe a flush draw, or maybe hopefully not.
Yeah. The queen ten here can bet, can continuous aggression straight up, or multi-way, he can, he can check and and be ready to do a lot of check raising, and he does the check. And the, and there's the crazy bet. Uh, so, if you're gonna, so with this, I guess the Jack ten is a terrible call, I guess, if you're gonna fold top pair to one bet.
No, you can't be going for the top pair.
Yeah, so, uh.
Especially in position.
Yeah. I don't see any good reason for queen ten to check raise here.
You see.
He absolutely shouldn't fold. Yeah, no.
He's really deep.
Uh.
Poor, poor Jack ten.
Jack ten just rage quit the game.
Yes, alright, uh, same thing, I don't see a reason to bet this ten here.
What about a blocker sizing?
No, I would, yeah, I think I would just check.
What happened on turn, check, check?
Check, check.
Okay.
That, that, that's the reason you check here is, is to call.
Although, nah, what can he have? Now that there are three Broadway cards. That missed this flop.
Well, the one issue is that this is the most, um.
Spade.
This is the most bluff line in poker.
True, yeah, that's the reason I would call.
Bet, check, bet, so.
Yeah.
It's a three bet pot.
But you're right, it's a really shitty run out for his combo, but you are blocking the nuts.
And you're unblocking spades.
And you're unblocking spades, I would, yeah, I think you can, I would roll for this, call after the time.
Blocking the spade nuts.
Yep.
Is, is it, is it too small, or is it fun, it's fine?
Well, it worked.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, you, you, you want to fold out a ten, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would, if I was bluffing here, I would bluff bigger, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust this bluff to work.
A, a li- little bit bigger, I wouldn't want to go too big where it looks fluffy, I guess.
I wouldn't want to go too big cuz I wouldn't want to lose that much money when, you know, when called.
Or that, or that.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
Problem that you, you can expect, you can say, okay, I'm, if I bet big, I love bluffy. It just, um, it narrowed the percentage of time it needs. When, the more you bet big, the more time it needs to, to work, you're bluff to work, so you have to have some value when you big big. So, you're gonna add your biggest in, in your range to be polarized the most. More you big, bet big, it's not about you look fluffy at this point.
Okay.
Another way to put the same, another way to put the same thing, this is exactly what Sedab had, but from the other guy's point of view, which is, well, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. But looking at someone who feels that way, which is if you're playing against an opponent who thinks that big bets are bluffs, that big bets are bluffy, that's pretty great. Cuz then you don't have to bluff, and you can get, and you can get thick value. Lots of value.
Size down, size down on your bluffs and, and size up on your.
And that's the.
Alright, here we go.
Yeah.
Alright, Jack seven, the Jack seven post, I think the fours should absolutely squeeze this.
But, uh, I think, thank you for clarifying, uh, clarifying, I just wanted to say, and I, I think, I think live, there is something to be said about image and strategy.
Yeah. Now. Can I completely exploitatively say this guy is massively capped here? And just ignore my cards? The, the big blind.
Jack seven.
Jack seven is a post.
Yeah, that's a good question, so I have not gotten to that level of exploit, but shout out if you find it.
Apparently I have, apparently I may not know how they play, but I do know how I play.
So, yeah, I think, I, I don't, I don't get to this level, but I can't, I kind of dig it.
Yeah, I'll just let you know, I'm not done yet.
Oh. You look.
Imagine how disappointed I am now that I don't get to bluff and show off, now I'm, now I'm worried about how, I'm worried about how to get any money.
What about check?
I was expecting to have to bluff this, so with that.
Ah, that's, alright, why do you bet so small? Could also check.
Yeah. Well, now, now he has to call, and should.
He should call, yes, that's.
Yeah, absolutely, he should call. And now he got there, and so did I.
Oh, man.
There.
Alright, let's see, how big do I go?
All in.
Yeah. Twice the pot.
Dimes get there, ten Jack gets there, and if you name it, it gets there.
What are you thinking, what are you thinking about the backdoor coming in, in this hand?
I liked it.
You liked it, yeah, yeah.
I liked the backdoor coming in.
Yeah.
All backdoors come in.
On the turn.
Very.
Yeah, oh, oh, and the, and the one liner too, right, six, yeah.
I was very happy, very happy.
The perfect card.
Yeah, the eight on the turn is not the.
I didn't like the eight on the turn.
It's a decent card, but not the best.
Yeah.
Villain seven eleven never posted again in his poker career after this incident.
Six was perfect.
That was his, let's see, does he leave the table now? Yep.
Of course.
He ended his poker career.
Ended his day.
That's the end of his quote-unquote poker journey.
Yes, exactly.
What do you get for?
About posting, um, because as we know, I would never post, uh, we're on.
Accepted.
Exactly, uh, well, except in the cutoff, nine-handed with enough players, I wouldn't even post in the cutoff six-handed. Okay, having said that, uh, the fives.
The hijack ten ended.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, you could play the hijack ten handed, but, but I just, I, I wouldn't.
Uh, after we shoot.
Cuz in a live game, you're allowed to wait and post in the cut, and just wait for the cutoff and do it. Alright, uh, fives can do it, if the fives don't do it, king five suited should. I would not be surprised to see the fives limp or fold. Nope, there we go, does a nice raise, with him raising, uh, king five just fold, right?
Yep.
Yeah, just don't, just don't do that. Right, and then the two of us are gonna fold, right, let's see how bad that is to, to the two point five size. Alright, that is the, oh, the fives, why didn't I look, the fives are in the hijack.
Hijack even.
Fold, hijack raise. Button needs king. Way better king, but king five is one of the bluffs.
Yeah, this is about.
You need all, yeah, I mean, it, there's a sliver of king six here, but it's really king ten for the, really need king ten to call the hijack. When it moves, when that raise moves to the cutoff. You got, you have, eh, same kings, okay, so anyway.
More king nine, king ten.
Bad play, let's see how bad, let's see how it goes. He does, fives don't have a spade, so it's gonna be really miserable to check call, so.
That's a backdoor.
Do a one and done, they're backdoor straight, but they have no spade, so if the other guy bets, I think you really need to fold the fives, so.
Um. I mean, I don't think, I think it's different, um, you have showdown value.
I mean, so let's talk about what his range is, his range.
Yeah.
He's pretty happy with this, with this texture, so he probably gets some c bets.
Except that, except that the button has a lot of aces. And the button's range.
Yeah.
His calling range, well, actually, the button has no calling range, so, oh, wait, it was hijack.
Hard to say what they call it.
Sounds pretty wide too, it's forty-eight percent of hand, right?
Well, he just doesn't have that big a calling range, he doesn't. Yeah. Of his three percent.
Okay, he's calling.
Yeah, you know, it's a thing.
But this is a good example of why uh, solvers sometimes don't serve as well, because you got people fighting king five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and that changes everything about what your play can be. Um, I would think for the fives though, if he's gonna bet here, that he has to bet, he wants to bet an amount that isn't a float, that, that doesn't encourage a float, because if, if he's, if, if he encourages a lot of floats, he's going to lose the hand from anybody who's any good.
Okay, so villain seven oh four open, and then villain seven oh nine and the button flag hold, right?
Hold.
So you're asking, you're asking, okay, now I see, so you're asking.
So I'm thinking, so, I, I'm thinking that the pocket fives now should either do, should check, and when bet two, do a fair amount of folding. Or if he's gonna bet out, I think he should be betting out at least four, at least four to five big blinds. Because he's gotta discourage floats that are gonna take the pot away from him on the river when he checks the turn. I think he has to play this one and done, maybe that's terrible poker play.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I kind of think, I mean, I agree with you.
Three, four, or five, you can bet still.
I, I think he puts himself in a, in a tough spot when he bets. Uh, when he checks.
Yeah, oh, he's in a tough spot, he's just in a tough spot.
Yeah, out of position, but.
Out of position, small pair with an ace on the board is a tough spot. And a flush draw that you don't have.
But maybe checking is wrong. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, 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 I would bet, I would bet mostly.
Alright, let's just check the chat and see if anybody's made, said anything.
I think, yeah. I'm, I really like this continue with the, the fives and the on the spot, and he, he can represent an ace and make fold a lot of, and that could draw on the turn. So it's a standard play, I think.
Okay, and what size though, so I, yeah, what, but what's, what size do you, uh, c bet here?
Don't.
Third?
You, you can go fifty or third, I think both is, is alright, if you go fifty, it's because it's a no, I think that the only draws that you can be afraid of is the, is the spade. But at some point, uh, it's, it's in the flop, he can have anything, so the thirty-three person is just fine, I think, on the spot.
Okay, well, it certainly worked, so that's a happy thing. Um, threes, threes can do some opening and some folding, which means that maybe he'll, maybe he'll limp. Um, if he doesn't open, uh, they should just fold around to the king five. So, there's our limp. And seeing the limp.
I don't know.
I don't. Yeah, I don't think the ten four can, I so, I don't think the king two should I so, so, uh, that's gonna go to the, it's gonna go to the pot.
I want to be sick if anybody else limps next up king five.
Well, the king five is gonna see the flop, it, the eight, nine.
I'm gonna be sick.
Eight, nine flipping, eight, nine flipping in one big blind, flipping in a half a big blind. Is probably wrong, but is it terrible?
Yeah, I find it terrible.
I think it is.
Well, then he's gonna do it.
Position against two players.
Right.
Oh, unsuited.
And I don't think the king five can squeeze here. I think the king five should just be happy to see the flop. Alright.
Who's gonna?
Nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna win this hand, that's my, 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 my prediction is no one wins this hand.
Oh, good, goes to the house.
Alright, sure, that's.
Now, 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 now someone's gonna win this hand. Alright, uh, eight, nine should, should absolutely bet. And he sh, he doesn't need to overbet it or anything. Just takes it from the king. Yep, yep, I don't hate the king's fold here. Drawing to a, drawing to a straight when the flush is already on the board.
Yeah.
I don't hate that fold. Close to that size.
You, you, you are lucky to, to have some limping guys still playing on the side.
Oh, yeah, we got the limpers. King ten suited raises, ace six suited, uh, should just fold, but if he calls, I don't hate it. Let's see, am I right? Let's see if that's true on the fold, it's, uh, he's low Jack minus one, there's the raise, button with an ace six suited, just folds. Yeah. But how bad can it be when ace seven does some calling, and ace five does some calling?
Well, what's the EV?
What's, what's?
Zero compared to zero point three compared to zero.
Yeah.
See, like, oh, like, uh, when the fold is the same as a call and raise, I think it's pretty much different.
Yeah, exactly, you, you, you have, you have defined the word indifferent perfectly.
Thank you.
So let's see what happens, there's the raise, oh, now the ace six should a hundred percent fold. With the raise being bigger, um, I don't, I, that's, or there's that.
Got you.
So Nick, so Nick is at the table. Because when he looks at, he says, when you bet big, that means that I should three bet more, and and my argument was, no, you shouldn't, you should three bet not more often than regular, you should fold more than regular, and then turn some, and turn some of your remaining calls into three bets.
Yeah, I think you condense your range, and you also. Within that condensed range, a higher proportion should be three bets.
Right, and having said that, given that ace six already was a fold here, I think this is the wrong hand to do it to, but it's, it's, it's certainly gonna be interesting.
It gets it through.
Just gets it right through. Which, for the king ten is not necessarily the word, I mean, well, let's see. Let's give this guy.
Five and get a raise.
I think king ten is gonna have some four that bluffs here.
Yeah, but against that sizings.
Yeah, I think, I think this is like a, uh.
Folds now, huh?
This is like a cuspie hand, so it can go any way.
Yeah, it's Neapolitan, and I think it's a really good fold in this particular case, when he, when he made it extra big in the guy, still three bet him.
This is probably the biggest leak of mine, how to, how to ISO late position, button, cutoff, etc.
Right, well, um, let me give you, let me give you a little heuristic there. Um, you're on the button with a hand that you can play, and an early position person raises, and you're deciding whether to ISO. If you have to decide whether to ISO, just fold. Um, if a late position like the cutoff raises you, uh, don't do very much calling. Mostly, mostly, if you're gonna, if it looks like a hand that you want to play it, mostly three bet it. Three bet almost everything, so I'll show you the ranges that I'm saying.
Okay.
And we'll see if I'm right, alright, let's get a fold here, let's look at the cutoff, cutoff versus the button, the button, button has has some calls, but look at every single hand that calls, except for these threes, fours, fives, also raises, right? As a matter of fact, they almost all majority raise, except for ace ten, so.
How does?
So I'm saying is, oh, go on, skate.
Sorry, keep the, how does your table dynamic change your strategy here, for example, if they're way too?
If, if I know something about the cutoff, it changes, so if the cutoff is a knit, um, fold more, if the cutoff is opening a lot, raise all these a hundred percent and.
Play closer to.
Raise, add your sevens, add your, no, not closer to GTO. Um, drop all your, if he's, if he's raising more than he should, drop out all the calls here. Um, raise the eights a hundred percent, raise the nines a hundred percent. I'm sorry, the sevens a hundred percent.
Um, ace six, ace three, suited.
Yeah, yeah, put just, just every rate, just every hand that's here. Yeah, every hand that's here, make it a three bet. Um, I don't care what you do with the king six, if you fold it or you raise it, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a free hand anyway, but go down to the sixes, sixes and sevens and just raise, and then fold all this down here. That, if he's doing that, and then if he's, if he's more nitty, uh, let all this, let all this go, and, and get into sort of a nines plus, uh, nines plus, ace jack. Or maybe even just, maybe just this line. Oh, if, I'm sorry, tight, I meant if he's tight.
Raising or also if it's full.
Now, I, what I really meant was if he is, if, if he is, if his opening range is tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
You were talking about table dynamics, so, so I'm not looking at table dynamics, I'm looking at just this guy, now I suppose, I suppose there is a table dynamic about the blinds. Are the blinds the ones, do they come along, do they, do they flat three bets?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure, like, I know.
Do they squeeze, yeah, so there are the ones to consider.
Yeah, what's your name, the, the coach on the site, uh, said it, yeah, like, i- if, of course, if the big blind is, um, is a good player, then your, your strategy's gonna change on the.
Yeah, you want to three bet more if the big, yeah, if the big blind is a good player, you wanna, you, you wanna be three betting your button more than you call it, because he's gonna be squeezing you. And because you're letting a good player in the other way.
Yeah, okay.
Here we go. Foldy, 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 fold and, and have the ace queen, ace king be disappointed. Oh, well, now the ace king is happy.
Yeah, also because you want to have the bad play for, for yourself, not, uh, sharing.
I, I, I think, like, you know, we all know poker, we've been playing for a number of years, but I think for me, like, it's important for me to maybe, like, do quizzes there, like, before I play, like, you know, ta, you know, to get my confidence, you know, my, my morale up.
Yeah, quizzes are good, quizzes are good.
Yeah.
I like, I like the poker coaching, I like the poker coaching quizzes. For those of you out there who are looking on YouTube, which is no one, uh, join poker coaching, good quizzes. And some of the poker coaching quizzes are for free, so you can just go to pokercoaching.com and play some of the quizzes and see what we're talking about, you'll, and then it'll make you wanna become a member of poker coaching. All right, here we go. Uh, three bet this ace king. Good job. Um, I, it doesn't have to be that big, but sure. I think standard is just nine big blinds, but this, uh, my standard is nine big blinds, is that what, uh?
Uh, seller likes ten.
Uh, I think I like the, the eleven.
Okay, let's see.
I think, I think the argument for ten is that you're closing the action, so you don't have to worry about a four bet blind.
Yeah.
Call four bond.
Yeah, but because I, for the same reason as I only go to nine in position here, I go to nine here, but yeah, ten, fine, eleven, great. Uh, and this ace three should still get out of the way, and he does. All right. Uh, ace king raise, ace queen gets in trouble. Cause the ace to king should three bet that ace king, the ace queen should be three betting here.
Yeah.
All right, there's the raise, extra big raise, but this extra big raise, I think we can ignore because we've seen it from seven oh three several times. The three point five.
Yeah, it's no significant change.
Yeah, um, but wow, that's tight from the ace queen.
Uh, I think we have another super user.
Yeah, king four suited, isn't a super user.
You have another hacker.
King, so king four, king four is obviously a call here, but uh, against this extra big thing, maybe not. Let's see if, is it cuspie at all? Yeah, is it cuspie at all against the hijack?
It's a jack deuce suit, Stephen, or something like that, is it jack three? I don't know.
So the king.
Is hijack that opened or is hijack that opened?
Hijack, yes, hijack. Hijack cutoff button. See, because Yoss, the way we name it is the person who is the dealer, that's called the button because there's a button in front of them. And then to, just to his right, we call the cutoff. Anyway, moving on, uh, yeah. Yeah, so, uh, to the three point five, dropping this, dropping this out wouldn't be terrible.
Probably even good.
Well, that would be terrible, it would be terrible, but then again, you wouldn't see the flop, so you wouldn't know how bad a, a play it was to fold it.
So I think this is a pure.
Check range?
Fast play. But I think top bottom, slow play is, and you're confused.
Um, so here's what it is, what we found. If you have any slow plays of your two pairs, top bottom is the one that's slow plays the most in, but not always, I mean, we, we saw the exception on the river. Um, this is, it, it's the one that does it on the flop or the turn.
Yeah.
And there's a good reason for it, but in this case, this is a great check raise, don't bet, check, bet, oh, he bets huge.
So against the sizing, it gets interesting. Um, me, Mike, we, this might be an interesting hand to run. Um, yeah, I think now against the sizing, you don't have as many check raises, but you might because this, the fragility of the equity of a two pair like this might require you to fast play it.
A queen.
Here's my view, here's my view on that for, uh, the, the, on, on that, which is this sizing makes your check raise frequency go way down, but two pairs is up there.
Yeah, exactly.
So you stop doing it with, so you don't do it with your king queen now that you were gonna do it with. And maybe you don't do it with your slow played ace king, but you're still gonna do it with your sets, and I think you're gonna do it with your sets and your two pair.
The BBZ, the BBZ guy calls this a tension between two theories.
Yeah.
You've got a tension between two kind of principles of poker.
Right. But the fragility of top bottom is that is that when the ten comes, you're dead, but you're gonna back off when that happens.
Yeah.
Do you cha, Dean, Dean says, do you change your sizing when it's this big? Yes, yes, because, um, a two and a half, a, a two and a half check raise is gonna be, if he, if he goes over the top, it's gonna be a jam and you're gonna be setting up for jams anyway, you just don't have to go that big.
No.
He said for stacks.
If you relate to the pot, then it's, uh.
The other interesting thing that we're not taking into consideration, how dry this texture is. This is, I think, the driest of textures. Oh, I guess you have queen jack, so there's, there's dry.
Queen jack, queen, queen jack, ace queen, queen jack, ace queen, jack are all there.
Jack nine, maybe, check nine, yeah, except for the ten, but whatever.
So, yeah, right, I wonder how that changes.
Yeah.
Maybe we run this.
I mean, if it's me, I'm considering not check raising now because of the size, I'm considering it.
I agree, I think, yeah. I think, I think I, I think I call here and then see his behavior on turn.
Right. And I'm gonna check raise to twenty here.
Um, I would check raise.
Wouldn't mind to check raising.
Yeah.
Also not.
The way this was, and this was way too big, twenty point two eight, way too big. I was gonna do twenty.
All right, so what do you, ace king now, what is it gonna do?
Ace king should not be happy now, but he can't fold.
Well, and also, it's interesting to look at pot odds here. So he's getting twenty-seven percent, look at his equity, he's actually getting direct odds here. So this is like an important, did you see? Because
Yes.
We are, how often does this happen? And then how often we're like, well, Christ, I've got um, top, top, I can't fold, but then this gives you a real insight to what your equity is.
Right.
Basically, most often this is a set, but.
Yeah, if the king four turned his hand over, the ace king should call.
Correct.
This is, and this is what we meant, um, skate with the direct odds, which is, if there was no more betting, if it was just like, this was the, this was it. And, and then the next two cards come, the ace king should call, even if the king four turned his hand over and showed it.
I'm, I'm just surprised to see with three, we have three outs, well, not three outs.
No, because we, the tens, the tens are an out, and then the turn, whatever card the.
The turn is probably higher than a four, so.
Right, when an eight, when an eight comes on the turn, that's three more outs.
But it's like a, unknown outs that we didn't know that we.
So we've, no, we can reverse engineer it, so we've got thirty-one percent, so we've got eight outs. Alright.
I'm surprised we have, um, thirty percent here. I thought it would be less.
Well, this, that is the fragility of two pair that I was.
Three, right, three aces, jack queen, any ten, and whatever the turn is, is gonna be an out for us, is gonna bring in three more outs for us. Except for that, that's a bad card for us.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the king four should not slow down.
Nope.
Yeah.
Um, and at this point.
At least half pot, right, at least.
Well, yeah, half pot's enough to, for a shove on the river, so that's just fine.
Well, there's a, well, the concept of geometric here, but.
S, well, with the SPR, he doesn't need to go half pot, I think he could probably, I, I don't know, what do you have to?
I think his hand has fragility, so a bigger size is good. I don't think he necessarily minds a fold.
Nope. But now look at what the ace king's, look at what the ace king's equity has dropped down to.
Yeah, that's a good point. I might have taken consideration into.
Yep.
The two.
Twenty-nine, he's keeping that ace king in, it's gonna be very, it's very hard for the ace king to fold right now.
I don't mind, I would want a little bit smaller, um, but whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to fold the ace king at this point.
Right.
All right, now what's he gonna do? Problem now is that he can't, it's hard to fold.
It's gonna be hard to fold the river too.
So.
I think he has, I think he has to jam here.
Yeah. And he might get a crying call from the blocking the flush, back to flush.
Right. And my argument is this. At with, at, with only half pot left, less than half pot left, if villain seven eleven calls, checks, and seven oh three goes all in, seven eleven's not gonna fold two pair, right?
Yeah, it's too good.
So if he's not folding two pair here, then in figure, in configurations like this, and the ace king, if the ace king doesn't bet, he wins nothing when he has the better hand and he loses everything when he has no hand, so that's why he has to bet.
Uh, yeah.
Do you, d, does anybody hate that logic there?
Um.
The, something, uh, something I learned from the year, because it's been one year and I'm studying this, and I, I found out when you think your opponent's gonna, uh, it is, is flush like this because it's, it seems like he, he, he got something when he calls you, um. It's like, you, you can't just say, oh, I'm gonna check because he's beating me, it's, it's not that, it's like, what is his range? He has a flush, he has the ace king, he has the aces, he has the queens, who, yes, you, you, you're just gonna call when he's gonna shove with the, the flush, so you're better betting and getting value from those other end that have to call with the SPR. And then just check calling because you think that he, some of his range would beat you, mo, mostly on the river, it's.
I agree a hundred percent. And this hand is runnable, so we're gonna be running this in a second. So s, set it up, Larry, here we go. And he does the move that I like, and he's going to get, with the king of diamonds in his hand, he's getting called.
All right, we can run this.
Is a hundred big blind pot, people. All right, here we go.
I will set it up, hold on. Continue, continue your activity, boys, so.
All right, all right, here we go. Next hand while he sets it up, uh, jack ten uh, can open there, and if he does, he should take it, but the sixes with, the sixes on a broken stack should just jam the broken stack into anything. All right, let's see what happens. The jack ten raises, sixes should just jam here. They do, and the, and these people should play a pot against each other for but the deuces come in, that is terrible, that could not be worse.
Falling in the D.
Yeah, that's so bad, and the threes. Who were you set mining against? I guess the jack ten?
It's jack ten.
All right.
Gonna guess each other. Ah, the three's good, that is.
Threes get there. And the jack ten gives it with his straight draw, gives the threes the money.
And we don't know yet.
Oh, well, it's a pretty, it's a big bet, call. Check, now he's gonna, he's checked, shuts down, and with quad threes, he doesn't get called.
Odds ago.
There you go.
All right, you guys ready?
We are ready, I mean, release.
All right, so here are ranges, so we've got ECG's opening range. Um, big mind is mostly is mixing with king four, but it does have it at some frequency. There's our flop, let's see what our range is, so this is gonna be a really good range for imposition RFI, I think. Yeah, he, he just really loves this, so he might get some big bets, let's see. Um, so, we're, with this kind of rage disadvantage, we are going to check pure, yeah, it's like forty sixty, that's what they give us.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're gonna check four, check pure. See if he gets some big bets, cause he bet pot, right?
Uh, let's make one change, sorry, it's the cutoff raise, no, and, oh no, you have the hijack, not the logic, you're good, okay, hijack, everything's right.
Alright. Um, yeah, he gets big bets, he, he bet pot, right?
Yeah, and he has, he has a seventy-five percent and he has a one, so let's, let's just hover over the ace king for just a second. He's got club diamond. So ace of clubs, king of diamonds has has a fair amount of the one twenty-five, so so the fact that he found a pot sized bet is just fine.
Should we give him a B seventy-five or a B one twenty-five?
Seventy-five, then you have more of our hands.
Yeah, give him the seventy-five.
So then, this is, this is our first question, right? Our first question is.
Yeah.
Facing this size, what are our two pair to do?
Right, and then let's also look at it against the one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Before moving on, those are two.
All right, so our two pair, oops, our two pair are still check raising at a healthy, yeah. But so, we are still check raise.
Bit less.
Uh, not as much, yes, but we still get a lot of check raises. What's our equity difference here between top two and top bottom, I'm curious.
And we have hearts, so it's, hearts do it very little.
So, actually, yeah, it's a significant difference in equity. Ten percent, well, maybe, what is that? Five percent. Um, all right, interesting, so.
King ten blocks, king ten blocks the, uh, common sets, king four doesn't block the pocket tens, which is a common set, whereas pocket fours is an uncommon set.
Yeah, that's a good point, so, so let's just look, just for, real quick, let's just look at. Yeah, if we're gonna have check raises up here in the, with the top of our range, we're gonna have to have bluffs, just real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, jack nine. Jack nine, never finding it, and, and never finding this, all right, never finding the, the gut shot, uh.
Yeah, I think that's how the wash you should find, actually, yeah.
So, um, so, we check raise, right? And what size did he use in game?
Twenty.
He went to twenty, and what is the red size?
Twenty.
Uh, so the red size is gonna be big against this, yeah, what is the size?
Point eight is close.
So, yeah, he only has one check raise size here, across this entire range. And that is, he doesn't have a small check raise, just has this big check raise.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a, I guess like a five X, or what's, what's pot here? So here's pot, and pot is.
That pot.
That's, pot is four, he bets, pot here is, that's two X pot.
It's hundred percent.
Wait, I'm gonna try something cool.
Yeah.
It's two X pot.
I calculate different, uh, always, if I say, you say two ones, I say a hundred, because uh, DJ Wizard is actually playing a hundred percent pot, huh? And the reason is, first call, and then you put in the pot on top of that.
Right, yeah. Yep, and that seventeen point eight is the twenty, cause remember, our guys started at three point five instead of two point five. Now, before going on to the next street, yeah, before we go into the next street, let's just see what we do to the one twenty-five. Because what he really was, was in between these two.
All right, so if he bets, if he overbets, what happens to our check works?
That's check raising, king four none, nah, it's tough.
So he now is gonna shove a lot. No, he's not shoving, he's, he's got this, he's mixing between a raise to sixteen big blinds and a raise to twenty-six big blinds.
Right.
But it's king four, look at this, he's got king four now, king four is now checking it up. I think king four still loves its equity, but it's, it's now maybe, well, that doesn't make sense, cause king ten did the same thing. Yeah, so I guess king four now has probably less, let's see what his equity goes down to this size, it was, now he's got the same amount of equity.
Yeah. And the king four of hearts does the more checking, but, so as played, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with the play as it goes, now let's see how it, let's see what, what it gets followed up with.
So B seven, okay, so he, we're gonna say B seventy-five, we're gonna say check raise to twenty, and then we're gonna clear this, and hijack is, it's top pair is shook.
Yep.
So.
After calling.
Yeah, top pair, mostly, it's gonna call with this best, but very linear in the sense that it begins to fold out its force kickers.
Yep.
So that's an important.
The backdoor staying there.
So you can like. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go to the ace king suited for just a second and hover, let's see what the suit that jams is. We jam, we jam the heart, we jam if we don't have a backdoor.
Yeah, we're shooting the non-backdoor.
And now.
It's not, it's not a jam, it's a re-raise, but.
I'm sorry, it's a re-raise, I'm sorry. And the ace king offsuit, the, uh, three bets, I, I just wanna see if there's an obvious thing we'd prefer.
Yeah.
The biggest fold is heart, the biggest fold is hard club.
So my guess is that this is about the fact that you're unblocking his bluffs.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's green, it's green.
Yeah.
I assume you're trying to generate a fold here.
Yeah.
You're on, um, so raise, so we're never folding, I, and then again, going with that same theme, we have the backdoor, we're calling. But if we don't have the backdoor, or we get to fold, actually, look, it's folding like, yeah, it's folding essentially, king nine, pure.
Yeah.
King jack begins to mix in.
Yeah.
But that's an important thing to say, right? And I think it's, I think it's important to integrate these folds into your play. For me, at least, I'm saying this for me, because I'm a station in these situations. Because it just doesn't have value without the backdoor, over, it's like an overflow, but it's not. Um.
And here's the mantra, Larry, that I think for a little while will not get us in trouble. I'm over, I'm always bluffing there. I'm over, I'm always bluffing there, never bluffing. Cause when you look at it, and you look at the hand, and you start thinking, you go, what hands would I be bluffing with? Which is what you wanna think when you're, and then you go, well, then they could have this, so I need to call with my top pair, they don't have that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a very good way to think.
I'm always bluffing there, never bluffing, I'm always bluffing there, never bluffing, I gotta say that to myself more and more.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to think about it. And, um, that makes a lot of sense, so.
The bigger the bet, the 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 bigger the bet, the lesser the bluff, the bigger the bet, the lesser the bluff, not true in GTA world.
They do it the other way around, the bigger the bet, lesser the bluff.
All the bet. The bigger the bet, the less of the bluff, the bigger the bet, the less they bluff, okay.
Uh, yeah, which is the opposite of what it should be in theory, right?
Yeah, right.
Um, so, the other interesting thing, real quick, imposition play is slow playing his very best hands.
Yeah.
Are you slow playing his kings? And he's not folding his aces, and he's sometimes just going with it, okay, so. Raise, we call. And.
Oh, don't say we call, we, we, excuse me, we are in the big blind right now, he calls.
Yeah, let's, let's give ourselves a better hand, two of diamonds, right?
Yep.
What does our two pair do now, so let's just focus on the two pair. This is interesting.
Of king four.
I mean, king four, yeah, I just thought it was interesting that we're giving up with this top two. But we'll get there, yeah, we're um, we're now. A little bit shook, what's our equity after he calls? We have a problem with our equity.
Probably.
Yeah, well, now, this, this is a very interesting check, if anybody has any explanation, we have seventy percent equity, which I think would be enough to bet. Uh, we have eighty two percent here, which I definitely think is enough to bet. If anybody has any explanation as to why we checked here, I'm happy to hear it. It might be that we're blocking continues, that's the only thing I could think.
Yeah, they're blocking calls, probably.
I got it, no, cause we 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 blocked, the king ten does also, so. You assume that you have a reason to put some two pairs in your checking range, and the way we know that is look at king ten. King ten is always king ten, and yet some of them check, right?
Yep.
So you've got it, so you're putting some two pairs in your checking range, when you put a two pair in your checking range, top bottom, or in this case, top. You know, top third are really good ones to do, because when you bet and they call, they have a king or better. And when you get counterfeited on the river. They would have, it didn't matter whether you bet or not, they still would have called. So you lose less money when you get counterfeited on the river, when the ten comes in, the king ten is virtually never counterfeited on the river. A four comes in, you're still beating ace king, so, if you're going to check, if you have a reason to check your two pair, and sometimes you don't, here you clearly do. The top bottom, the fragile one is the one that you check, even though going, it's fragile, I have to bet it, it's like, no, no, no. Because they're going to call you with the hand that beats you on the river anyway. Or their hand that you beat on the river when you get there. So, that's why.
Alright, well, let's, yeah, I think you're right, I think it makes a lot of sense, let's just.
Yeah.
So this is our two pair, this is just looking at two pair, king ten, checking. And then, the more fragile ones, king four. Are, king four, we're only picking for this way, is hundred percent check. Yeah, so that makes sense, all our combos can tend, are mixing it in, but let's go look at our, our whole range here really quickly. We are checking, we are really protecting our checking range here. Because. Our best hand, our best hands are checking, so we're doing a lot of protection to check. Which is interesting, so we're not piling it in with our middle set, and we never have kings. Alright, uh, yeah, that, your explanation makes sense. Um, we do get to bet some, and if we bet, we're B seventy five, which he did in hand, right? Especially our only sizing, so that's all we're gonna choose, otherwise we break the salt. So, so big blind now B seventy fives with this top two. How does our ace king feel now? How do you feel now, ace king?
Not happy.
Yeah, not happy, so he had, yeah, so you are now, so this ace king off. Is really.
Which is specifically club diamond is the one he's got, he's got club diamond, cause that diamond's gonna come in on the river and matter a little bit.
So club diamond, where is it, club diamond? There it is, yeah, it's indifferent, it doesn't, to use a technical term, it's indifferent as fuck. It's uh, it's mostly folding. Uh. Yeah, it's indifferent. Now let's go over, just real quick, all of his top pairs. Yeah, top pair is just really in in a mess here. You really need to have these diamonds, yeah, so if you have diamonds, you're just, your top pair is going for it, just. The worst are.
Yeah.
Uh, so what about your ace king? Yeah, this one is calling, it's kinda slow playing, but your equity must be very slow, but very low. Now facing this aggression. Yeah, you still have lots of. Um, alright, so he. He overcalled, right, here?
Yep.
He calls, now what are you gonna do with? Now what are you gonna do with your? Top bottom? When he calls this ridiculous, your big sizing. When the flush completes with the jack of diamonds. Backdoor fuck. Your two pair are just. Is, are mixing, so you're never playing your king four this way, that's the first thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but your top two are mixing. And I liked your previous argument, that we're always betting because we can't fold.
Mm-hmm.
But let's test it.
True.
But let's test it. Um, so. Let's, so we bet all in, which he did, our, all our top pairs are not gonna give up, right? We're got it. Sorry.
Okay, I have to go, uh, see you all.
Alright, y'all, so we'll talk to you in the new year.
Please don't go. Don't go.
Oh, baby, please don't. So, yeah, we're, we're mixing now, cause our pot odds are a lot different, like, what are our pot odds? Yeah, our pot odds are, we have to win one out of four times, our odds twenty four percent. So now we've got ourselves in a pickle with top pair. And so we're calling.
Yep.
Over, our aces are mixing. Two pair are. Uh, what am I doing, I'm got too much stuff on, clear. Uh, two pair are even shook a little bit, but are mostly calling, I wouldn't be able to fold two pair here. Uh, sets are pure, flushes are pure, so, um. Yeah. So we're calling a little bit, what about, the other question I have is. If big blind does choose to check his two pair, which he's doing at some. Relatively low frequency, if we do check. Uh, he doesn't really, he has a little bit of a checking range, he's checking his aces. Not his sets, this breakdown. So this is imposition after a check, he's got bluffs, he's generating bluffs here. So I don't think we're gonna fold, because obviously silver has a healthy, the appropriate healthy amount of bluffs. So, he shoves, she's only sizing, what's our two pair doing? Yeah, we call. We happily call with our king ten. Our two pair are pure.
Alright.
We have hardly any equity, but we only need, well, we have. We, we, we meet our equity requirements, cause our pot odds are twenty four percent, and we've got estimated twenty seven percent equity. Alright, handing it back to you, sir.
Something to me in that hand was the king four checking the turn.
Your mic is quite low at the moment, Scotty.
Oh.
No, he's just far away from.
That makes sense, hold on. No, I'm, I'm right here, it's just, uh, it's just I had to switch to the phone again, um, here we go. So I was, I was surprised to see the uh, the check on the turn, there, alright. We just did this, that was the exciting three. Alright. And we're looking, we're now looking for a hero hand, cause we're, we're gonna be ending.
Okay.
As I fly from Kansas City to Austin, alright, but we're. So, uh, folds around to the ace two suited, in a perfect world. But I wouldn't be surprised to see that ace six suited limp. King three in the butt, uh, a bit of a stretch, but fine. And now the ace, I should call, should play this. Uh, this for a raise. And are we, just look, there's ever. Let's see. Button raises.
Scotty, I think we lost you.
Oh, do you, okay. Yeah, you're back.
Connection.
I'm back, okay, there we go, yeah, connection's gonna be funky, this is Carter, but uh, we'll see if we get an answer here.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Oh, we lost him. Gentlemen, you're stuck with me, should we? Um.
I don't know, uh, uh, how many people do we have, I'm get, I'm getting kinda hungry.
Alright, shoot.
I was gonna get some to eat, but I don't know about the rest of the.
Yeah, we'll give him a couple minutes to come back and just say goodbye, and then we'll call it, and I wish you guys a happy new year.
Hey Larry, if you want, I'm able to um, pull up some cards up type hands again, if we wanna continue.
Um, uh, yeah, I'll look at some more, I, I am a glutton for punishment, we can, we can go on.
Yeah, I've got time.
Oh, this guy's back.
Got it.
Alright, I'm back, uh, there's a very good chance I'm gonna get cut off again, and if I do, we're done. Oh, wait, wait a minute, I'll do a smarter thing, let me just uh, hand, let me just hand over. Control to one of you guys, and you guys can go for as much longer as you want, and I will listen.
Okay, that's fine, Scott.
Larry, you are now, Larry, you are now the host.
Okay.
Larry's the host, just in case I drop out, there we go, but we can continue with this while it goes, okay.
Okay.
So, this guy, the thing that we saw was, the ace two suited, um, from the big blind, is. Has very little re, very little raising, but the ace five, ace five does, so his call was perfectly fine there. And then this happens, and it should go check that fold. Check, oh, check, check, I'm okay with that, protecting his checking range with a bad top pair, that's great. Uh, and losing the hand because of it. Uh, I don't think the ace two should bet out here, though. Um. Well, actually, he's splitting with ace ten.
Yeah, there's a lot of, this is now a chop opportunity, heavy chop.
Yeah, yeah, it is, so should he be betting this here? Uh, he, if, does the other guy ever slow play a queen, that's the only question.
Yeah, I think that, I would check here.
But never fold, check, check, and now, alright, it's time, it's time to get some value.
Yeah, and now you got that.
You got that.
And Gene has a good point that on turn, it makes a lot of sense to bet to put pressure on chops.
Yeah, yeah, it does, if, if you feel confident you're never facing a queen, you're just never facing a better king, because. I mean, you're never facing a better ace, because ace king bet, he did that case.
So you would have to bet something crazy to get him off a chop, right, like, like, well, like.
Well, that's bad, but.
Pretty scary board.
That pot, that pot, that pot. Yeah.
Okay, like turn river, kinda, okay.
He bets three quarters. So you are see what, it's really to see here, what do you? What is your, what is your value target here?
Um. Uh, under pair or a king? An under pair like.
So, I mean, everybody's cap. And so it looks a little fluffy.
But personally, yeah, I really like this bit. Uh, you get your value, I get the king, again, the the lower pair, like as Kate said, and uh. Uh, if you get three raised, but you're gonna ju, make call because you have a full house today's. And uh, you sometime gonna get wrecked by a queen, but most of the time, you're gonna get. Value every time with that kind of better, get somebody who has the full house two, but a lower one.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanna, I agree with all that, but I still wanna bet bigger than, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna bet six, six or seven. Or even eight, because ace, you're chopping with ace king. You know, because of how your value targets work, you're just worried about a queen. Pocket aces.
For the extra in value?
Yeah, but I just wanna bet bigger, because I just think that every hand that calls you, calls, calls six, every hand that calls four and a half, calls six, I think. What, what, what hand do you have, that you're gonna fold to six, but that you're gonna call four and a half, just name the hand. Fucking doos.
I mean, yeah.
You're gonna call pocket douches for four and a half.
No, I get on board with what you're saying.
Yeah, so that's my thought, and it works. Good for him. Nicely done.
The, uh, the problem with this, that is, uh, when you beg, you bet seven, you have to call, and the guy can re-raise you. Uh, with the, if he had the queen, and now you're bad, but because the raise is gonna be far bigger when he re-raise you.
Yeah, they get to fold too.
That's true, well, that's true, and he can get you off a chop, and he can get you off a chop, that's true. That mean, yes. Alright, uh, king jack, this is too early, uh, king jack should fold, ace ten is a little early, he'd raise it and have to. Um. But I guess, you know, either one of them, either hero or villain, seven oh, he could open. Uh, jack queen should open, uh, in the hijack there. Uh, king seven shouldn't call, the queen jack should take it, if it goes that way, but instead, I decided that this was not too early.
Yeah, I think it should fold around to button, button should open.
Uh, let's see how bad this is. Under the gun range, nine handed. Yeah, that's not there. Okay, so uh, exploitative, exploitatively, I've decided to raise, because I haven't seen that many three bet. I say, by trying to find a justification. And there's one, this is going to go horribly, but I'm just gonna fold now. Oh, look at that, someone played worse than me, that's nice to see, I'm definitely folding. And.
So Scotty, I think, I think we're getting lag, cause we're not seeing the same screen you are right now.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, so what you saw was the ace ten. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna go back a step, and when it catches up, but I'll describe it to you. The king jack, I opened my king at the ace ten three bet it, surprisingly, and then the ace three offsuit in the big blind, calls the. Calls the under gun, under the gun, and under the gun plus one. Raise, re-raise, the worst play ever, I fold. Minimizing my work, and on a six, eight, nine of clubs, without a club, the ace three, that's pot. He's decided he wants to win this hand.
He dunked.
And the ace, he dunked for twenty, he dunked pot into a, he dunked pot into a three better.
It's, it's catching up, we can see the insanity. Alright, so now, he, he don't spot, here.
Yeah. Ace ten calls. He's got a straight straw, two overs.
It's not, not folding, now what is, what happens on turn?
I don't know, if the ace three jams, I think, I think he may get a. Who knows, but now he chins and gives up, and the ace ten takes it away from him, and the pot hand is over, and. Bad for you, ace ten, bad for you, uh, ace three, and that was a hand that I played, and that counts, so that'll be how we end.
Alright, man.
On my bad play, that cost me, that cost me two and a half big blinds, but cost villain seven oh nine, uh, forty big blinds. On my bad play, that cost me, that cost me two and a half big blinds, but cost villain seven oh nine, uh, forty big blinds. Not forty, sorry. Cost him a total of thirty big blinds, twenty-nine. There you go, alright everybody.
Um, well, what are your thoughts on opening king jack off there? I mean, was there a reason?
Mistake.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I decided to make a mistake.
Okay.
I was just wrong, uh, there's no justification, I mean, there exists a justification, but clearly my justification is wrong. Analysis is wrong because the, the only justification for widening your range early like that is the, the table doesn't three bet. And if a guy is gonna three bet you with ace, you know, with ace ten there. Cause let, let, allow me to show how bad my play is, bad my play is. Okay, I needed a king, queen, or an ace jack, and even the ace jack doesn't do it that often. And when that happens. His response if ever comes in here. Is not going to be ace ten off at all, there's not gonna be a single ace ten off here. He's gonna be ace queen off, at, at, oh, not even ace queen, that's how bad it's, but.
Yeah, like, king off maybe.
If his play. Yeah. If his play is this bad, and my analysis was that wrong, that, that it isn't happening much because it's happening more than it should be. Which makes my play even worse. So. I played bad, I'll see you guys on Tuesday.
Yep, uh, Tuesday, have a, have a space trip.
See you next year.
Alright.
Happy new year.
Um, it's so great, did you want to continue with uh some more of this?
Yeah, I've got the power, so, um, yeah. We can go for a little more.
Okay.
Scotty's at it, okay, do you mind?
Absolutely fine, you run, run as long as you want and you know, I'll disappear when I disappear, okay.
Okay, um, so. Um, do you wanna, do you wanna do a couple marked hands or you just want to continue with uh Cards Up?
Oh yeah, you tell me, I'm, I'm ready for Cards Up, but if you have marked hands, that's fine too.
Anybody else have any marked hands?
Yeah, I have, I have one.
Alright, why don't we, why don't we, I've got one, of course, I always got one, why don't we do a couple marked hands to mix it up, just to mix it up and then we can. If we still have time after, we'll go back to uh Cards Up. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, I like that.
What you got for us? Alright, so I'm gonna share your, your hand, so. Do you want, do you want me to uh share your hand or do you want a screen share? It's great.
Um, can you, I don't know how to work this thing.
Alright, I'll do it.
Why don't you take it Larry, because that way you can uh also pull up whiz if you need it.
Okay. Alright, so I am going to uh share my screen.
Thank you Larry, remember that uh, what was the hand I had last time? It was uh, what, king, jack suited, I think? I had, I was a broken stack. Uh, this, this is what happened, uh, this is why, this hand is why I was broken stack, so you'll see.
Okay.
The hand that. Previous hand.
Alright, can you guys see the hand?
Yes.
Alright, so.
My favorite hand.
And L twenty-five. You've got kings, so you, you've got kings and you are facing.
No, I have jacks.
Oh, you have jacks, so you open. And you got a full stack. And you're gonna face a three bet. To three X, the two X. So this guy used a really weird sizing, right?
Yeah, on the button again.
So, this guy's using, he's got a broken stack, right, so he's playing with. Like, what is it? Twenty-five, he's using like sixty big blinds or whatever. So, um, what are you guys doing here? I. I think jacks mostly call on full stacks, I don't think you need to do anything except stall. What do you guys think? Mike, what do you think?
I wish I knew that then.
Uh-oh.
Uh, I'm just looking at the uh action now, so we are still pre-flop here, right? So.
Yeah. Sorry to catch up, Scotty.
Oh, we're jacks, okay, we have jacks.
Dean, what are you gonna do here? Dean will put it in chat for us a little bit, alright, so, yeah, I would just call here.
Yeah, this would almost always just be a flat for me here.
Yeah, so. Talk to me about why you're choosing to four bet.
Well, because apparently I do not know how to play online poker.
Well, let's look at, let's look at script, let's look at, uh.
You're not, you're not that wrong, uh, solver has, solver hijack versus button, you've got a lot of three bets of jacks. A lot of four bets of jacks.
Yeah, I stand corrected.
So, something, something I was this case is the four, you almost two point five, I think the, your sizing is a bit too big.
So you are in hijack versus button, right?
Yeah, I thought it was going for value.
Yep, sixty percent, sixty percent uh. Four bets.
Okay, so I'm off base, I would. I would have called this pure, I thought it was a pure call. Yeah, yeah, I'm wrong. I thought this is, I thought, I thought this is more of a call.
Uh, just for you, skate, look at the sizing, uh, of you made your three bets. It's twenty, so you, you, you should have gone something like four point two, uh, four point twenty-five instead of five.
He three bets to four, he, he three bets to six big blinds. So, yeah, you should be at like twenty, twenty-five big blinds, more than that. You're at twenty-five, I think this is an alright sizing, except you need to take consideration his. His broken stack. So really, so he, he, he three bet to the right size, which is. Uh, he went to two, he went to s- six, which is five, and then you went to twenty-five, which is, I think that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just sized it, sized it up a little bit.
I think, I think this is a fine sizing, and.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, he is, he is fast playing, so each, okay, so what are you doing? See, I, we, I guess we called, but what are you gonna do in solve a world? I think you call in solve a world. Button raises, you choose to raise to twenty.
That's, it's a good hand, I, I mean, I feel like I put already too much into folds, I mean, uh, with his stack, maybe.
Yeah, his bet was a little bigger than that twenty big blinds.
You went to twenty, he shoves.
But, but like, when they shove, they, do they ever have ace, ace king, or is it always?
So you played it perfectly in solve a world.
They've got ace king.
You call because of the ace king.
Yeah, I mean, you've got like a. This is your worst, essentially your worst hand that you call, your worst pair that you call, right? And actually, I think you call, you call tens a little bit.
So, so it wasn't like misplayed horribly?
It was not misplayed horribly, sir.
Yes.
You just ran into it.
Feel a little bit better now, I can sleep a little bit better at night.
And now it's easy to become more aggressive than, because I would have been colder in the three bet position.
Do you guys want to see a hand that I played horribly?
Sure.
Yeah, let's go.
So, uh, I sometimes study with Dean and we were going over uh some training last night and working on. High dunk uh frequency boards. And I shot myself in the foot for a hundred big blinds on this one. So he opens, we flat, this is high dock frequency, right? I'm gonna get to utilize, and actually have a hand that interacts with the, the dunk. Oh, good, we get to utilize our new skill that we learned last night. So, I use the appropriate sizing that we should be using. He calls, we get there. I think this overbet's fine. Alright, what are you guys doing here? Pair board now, we've got the. Like seventh, well, we don't, because it's a paired board, so we've got a marginal flush.
What I'm thinking about is bet folding. Um, yes, bet folding.
Hmm, over fifty percent, something like this.
Yeah, forty, something like that.
Maybe lower than this, thirty-two is, so right sizing, I think.
Thirty-three and what are you doing to a shove? Fold.
Fold, most of the time, you, if you bet thirty-two is because you're, you're ready to, to fold, if you bet the fifties because you want to call him.
Yeah, I could see that, you have thirty-two is better, I'm embarrassed to show that I did not do any of those things. I got, I was, I was ahead until the river.
The one thing to think about your, about your jam there.
Uh-huh.
Is you make it easier and easier for him to play correctly.
That's true.
Bet there.
Yeah, this is, this is a big error, so this is like.
Easier and easier to fold an ace.
So.
Yeah, whatever.
I thought I was being so clever, using so many solver approved um sizings. With my dunk here. And then my overbet solver approved here. And then I totally lost my head on the, on the river, I totally, I, I totally torched.
When the board paired on the river, all I could think about in my head is bet fold.
So if you do it, now would you, assuming that you did a bet like, let's say you did a bet of forty, you know, the sort of old style. Um, I've got a really good hand that I want to get called aside, and he jammed over for the other three, would you have called?
Um. I hope I've gotten good enough looking at solves to say this is a fold.
Alright, if you were gonna call, then you didn't make a mistake by jamming, just saying.
Yeah.
You're gonna lose all your chips anyway, this was, this was a fine order to lose.
So I really liked set up sizing on river, I think, I think that a B thirty-three is the right sizing here. I just, uh, I played this hand too quickly, I didn't think about it. This is the problem with playing out of position, is that.
Be, because uh, there's not only the, the full house beats you, the, although if he has a flush, he likely beats you. And when he calls you, you're over bet on the turn, he, he mostly have something strong. Because most players.
It's hard for humans to find. It's harder for humans to find a bluff here. Especially with the ace of, he's the most common bluff that anybody's gonna have, or even have is rarely, I think, is the ace of clubs.
Yeah, and it's already there, so maybe the.
But it's already there, so yeah, this is, this is a super, it's, it's torch.
Yeah, like rivers.
It's also. Oh, go on, Steve.
No, no, I was gonna say rivers are on the bluff and, and after Scotty's end with this question, um, I was gonna ask you, uh, how many tables were you playing?
Uh, yeah, I was playing three table.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is that for the flush over flush problem. The fact that it's an ace out there actually lessens your flush over flush issues.
Yes.
Because his most common flushes that beat you would have been ace high. He has fewer king, he has relatively fewer king high flushes.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. But, do you guys want to see this in solve, or do you want to move on to?
No, I do, I wanna see it.
Want to see this in solve, totally.
Alright.
But, but personally, uh, I think I'm not a fan of my flop down best. Personally, I, I, I check one hundred percent of my range in this spot on the, on the board. And I would have checked, a check raise and like on this board within you have.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a fine strategy, I mean.
Great.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a fine strategy, I think, um. I mean, we don't have necessarily, it's one thing to implement a duck strategy on flop, it's another thing to understand. That entire decision tree.
And the turn where I'm really interested to see how you continued when you got there.
Alright, so.
I bet, you, you must have loved the flop, open and straight flush draw.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, fuck.
Yeah.
Um, and Dean, again, Dean and I have been spent a couple hours training in the trainer with. Donkable flops, so, um.
And what a great turn also, because now so many of his, so many of his floats will continue then.
And also it eliminates so many of his flushes that float the dump.
It's just great.
So what do we got? Eight, eight of clubs, so, so what are our positions? Button versus big blind. Button rings, sevens. We're gonna have flats with our six, five, nicks. Eight, eight of clubs, seven of clubs, six of hearts, eight of clubs. Get this out of the way. Um, okay, yeah, so we don't dunk a lot on this board, I thought we dunked more, I think probably we. Dunk more against UTG or ranges number to find. I, I think against button, it reduces our dunking, but we do get some. Um, we are dunking the most with our combo draw. So, and I picked the right sizing, so that's fine. What's he supposed to do with his set? He might fast play it. He can mix. He's got a lot of raises on this board, let's see if his, uh. And he's raising all of his like. He's, the interesting part here to me is that all of the upper end of his, um, straight draws. Are raising at a high clip. But he gets to slow fly, which he did. Now it gets interesting. These clubs.
This is where I'm wondering if it's. If it's a small bet for you, like theoretically.
So this is, this is, yeah, this is where I, I, I did blow up on turn, I totally. See, this is why I think setup's just got a good point. It's one thing to understand donkable flops, it's another thing to understand the entire decision tree. Uh, the whole, entire dunking, no decision tree, and we are not ever betting. And it must be because of an equity shift, because. All, so many of his continues are flops, are, sorry, are flushes. And we can see that here, so the ranges. Hands. Now we have the same amount of flushes. Um, but this must be an equity shifting card, that's why we're not betting, right? So let me see, so here, let's look at our. Here are equities here. So he's got, once he calls, he's got more equity than us, then this ace comes. And it must shift. No, it doesn't really shift, we just check, I don't understand, but that's okay, because it's a dunk. So we're supposed to check, so the, so at this point, we're essentially are, it's a broken solve. Um, we're not supposed to bet, so I was off base. What about if we check? Do we get, are we checking to check raise here? What about that? Unleashing unexpected check raises, there we go, said so. So his most common sizing here is small sizing. Which is super common, I think, here. His sevens get to do anything because they've got essentially. Pro, well, they don't have all the equity because there's a flush available, so what is their equity? So sevens, oops. Sevens have got not that much equity for a set, that's flushes available. Um. But he can do whatever he wants, I've never seen a more equally. Distributed strat. Um, but let's say.
He cannot, he cannot check behind them, he has to.
Ah, good point, yeah, I cannot, so let's say, let's say he. I think a lot of people are gonna be fifty here. Am I check raising our flushes on this board? So let's filter for flushes. We're mixing. So now we're gonna mix all of our flushes and we don't care about. Which flush it is, except for our worst, but all the other flushes are mixing. Across our entire range. Um. And what size are we using? And we're clicking back, we just have a click back to this, this bet. Even with our enough flushes, so, um, alright, I think that's it for this hand. Is there anything else you guys want to see in this hand? It's so painful, I just want to delete it.
You did have, there was a sliver of betting.
I wonder when, uh. I wonder when, uh, because now you play like this, do, do you really do it with your dunk, dunk league?
Uh, do I do what with my dunk lead on, on turn?
I, I, I missed a part where, uh, on the flip, you put, uh, in reality, you pu, you do, the, you did the dunk league.
Are you asking about turn setup?
No, I'm asking the response to your dunk league with, uh, from the bottom. How, how you respond to your move?
So. Okay, flop.
I don't, cause like the button still has eights, maybe five, six, seven would be better, but I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't mind it. Six, seven, eight is better. Probably better for the big blind.
Oh, you find this like.
Obviously, um. So yeah, so he's got raises across this entire range. I mean, if you look at the breakdown of what he's raising. So his sevens and his eights, which are the, obviously we've got the most equity. Oh no, I guess his ten nine of clubs has got the most equity. The ten nine of clubs is raising pure, right? He's straight with a draw to the straight flush, is raising pure. Uh, and his, um. Sets are mixing. And they are not ever betting big here. They are always.
In fact, when you do this.
Clicking back.
You remove every Broadway cards, uh, from his range that does no clue.
Uh, he doesn't fold that much. He folds twenty, I mean, in theory, he folds twenty percent. I don't know how that lines up against, um. MDF, but he does fold some, right? So you're right. He, he folds ace king without bub. And he folds out his king with no back doors. So he does fold out a lot of, of, uh, it does fold out a lot of stuff.
If, if all that was no, uh, in fact, uh, no flush draw in it, uh. So I please are facing a flush draw, but I don't know why you call with, uh, N like I Eastern and not the East Jack, which is.
I think you call these ten because it's got the backdoor straight.
Draw.
Yeah, at least we do.
Not even a backdoor. It's a real straight draw.
It's a gutter.
Oh yeah, sorry. It's got a gutter. Yeah, sorry.
Uh, okay, that's what's bone my, my question.
Yeah, it's got a gutter. And same with, uh, four. Well, I guess the four is the bottom. So you, you do, even though you've got a gutter here, it's the ass end, so you fold it.
What, um, you, you donked and he called, right?
Yeah. Do you wanna go down that line? So yeah, he called. I thought I gone down that line previously. I think I did.
Yeah, we looked, we looked at this already. I wanted to know if he, um, raised you with his sevens, what your. Action would be with your open and straight draw.
Okay, so on flop, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so he, so, uh, he only has a click back here. Um. And if he clicks it back, our particular combo is re-clicking. We are raising to fifteen. Yeah, so we essentially re-click it. So if we re, so then the question becomes, if we were click, like we're supposed to with a big part of our range. Twenty-five percent of our range, if we would click, he's gonna have shoves here, right? I don't go down these lines very often, but this doesn't happen in reality, but I'm curious now. Yeah, he doesn't really have shoves. But he can re-click. So if he re-clicks, oh, he doesn't, he, he clicks with his eights. So if he re-click and he re-clicks with his combo draw, so now if he re-clicks after our re-click, he re-re-clicks. What are we gonna do? We gotta call now, right? Uh, we're, now we're just going with it. Um, yeah, now we're just going with it. This must be. We're still. We're trapping with our own ten nine of clubs, but we're mostly just going with it. We're gonna go with it if that happens. So. That was my mangled hand of the day, gentlemen. Don't do like me.
No, but the, the, in fact, uh. I, it's just the shove on the river, the, and like I said, the dunk bit that I maybe don't have enough in my range. But the rest, I don't think you play that badly.
Yeah, I, well, I, I, I think that, um. I mean, I, I think the one lesson it, for me is that. Having a flop dunk start is good, but you better understand a little bit more about strategy beyond the flop, which I do not do, which I do not have.
Hmm, and sometime, but you, we must be aware and s- something I learned lately is. Wh- when you get call, when you get a, a call with a small or with the small bet. This guy, uh, may, uh, call with a large one with gutter and things like this. But on the turn, when you over bet the turn and he still call right there should have alarm you. Oof, okay, this guy is strong.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't think, you're totally right.
Yeah, like we said, uh, when, yeah. Condesions your, your range, but.
Go on.
No, no, yeah, I, I, just what, um, what said have said, like when you bet large in the turn, the, the hands that he gets with. On the, to the river with are gonna be mo- more, you know, much more condensed.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a heavily filtered range. Totally right.
And, uh, to continue with my, there, I don't think right there on the turn when you over bet is gonna call you straight draw. So now he has something, or yeah, he's running the flush.
Correct.
And on the river, he, he misses flush draw for sure. So right now. Is, you have a, you have a bluffing, uh, flush draw and the pair board. So now he has a chance to have it, uh, to, uh, it follows. Or he has a chance that maybe was slow playing is, is, uh, higher flush than you. So, well, when I think like this, I believe the check call on the river would have been better.
Yeah, I think you're right setups. Yeah, I think, yeah, I mangled it. I totally.
But here's one thing to make yourself feel a little better. Let's just take a look at this. Play, um, go through the same thing, only play it, play it perfectly and the most common versions of it, which is. You dunk, then on the, then. Turn, you check, he bets his set, um, half the time you click and half the time you don't click. When you don't click it, um, and then this comes on the river, how much do you lose? Do you still lose? Do you end up losing your whole stack anyway, just in a different order? If so, don't feel so bad. If you lose, you know, if.
You don't, you, uh. Why don't we go through it real quick? But you don't, you fold, I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, that seems like a, a reasonable exercise now. We know they, how the hand works.
Do you guys wanna see that real quick?
Yeah, I, I predict you would, you would just flat. You would just call the river. You wouldn't fold.
Okay, so if I play this hand correctly.
But it's, but how big is he gonna make his river bed? That's what's gonna, that's what's gonna, we're gonna find out.
He calls. Uh, it is, oh, I just deleted the hand. It was an ace of club, but I'm just gonna bring the hand up again. But yeah, it was an ace of club. I remember he's not that shot.
It's the ace of clubs and then a seven.
Okay, we don't need.
Seven, seven of.
So ace of clubs. Uh, we.
It was the, it was the seven of none of your business.
Yeah, true.
Uh. We were supposed to, so, okay, so this is a bet he called ace turn. Oh, that's because that other line was wrong. I fucked up it when I showed it to you guys the first time.
Okay.
Because, uh, it didn't have the dunk in it. So we, so now it's all fucked up.
Oh yeah, this is different.
Yeah, alright, alright, why don't we go back to, to, uh, patient zero here and we'll start it up. So I screwed up, guys. Sorry, because first time I showed it to you, I, I thought I had the dunk in, but somehow it was not in. So this is totally different. So now, now I played it well, but I should, it's, it's, uh, bittersweet because I played it correctly. So now when we get here with our six five, we can do whatever we want. And our equity is different. I thought something was screwed up. Sorry, gents. So our EV of. Our six five is when we get there with our flush is we can do whatever we want here. We have all the options available to us. What's our equity? And it shows it as having ninety-two percent equity. Oh, how wrong you are. So, um.
Lot.
Yeah. I don't understand if I can read it.
It was eight, against his exact hand, it was about eighty percent.
Alright, it's not showing up, whatever. Uh, yeah, so in game, if I recall, I over bet, right?
Yeah, you over bet pretty.
Which is fine, which is, we actually get some of that.
One point five maybe.
Which he, one twenty-five.
Yeah. A little bit more, I think.
And he just, he smoke calls his sevens.
Yep.
Which is, right, so he's, should be, he doesn't have any raises in position. The only question is where his calling threshold is to this over bet. And he's calling thresholds around ace nine. So it's like ace nine is interesting because it's got an open ender and. Top pair, but he's unblocking the flush.
So top pair withdrawal or, or two pair plus?
Um.
Well, actually, well, not even two pair plus, right, on this turn?
So he's always calling two pair because he can, he can boat up, right?
Right.
Seth's always calling, everything's calling, is. He begins to have his calling threshold at like ace jack. Here. And he begins, his ace tens are now. His ace tens are now indifferent with his gutter. So we bet, he calls. We're gonna, this is like the, uh, the seven of diamonds, I think.
I think, whatever.
And which pairs it up forward. And now. Yeah, we're supposed to bet, we play six, five like this. We're supposed to, we're supposed to block that.
Block that, but small.
Well, that is a black bet by definition. So, um. Breakdown, we'll look at what we're supposed to do across our entire range. We're trapping the very top of our range, which is our quads, which, no, I'm sorry, which are, we never play sevens like this, so it's our. It's our full house with the eights. And then our flushes get to play, get big bets, B eighty-five with our very best ones. These are not flushes, right? So then, but then when we get down to where our flushes are, which is right here. We're block, we're blocker sizing, we're using a bet eleven. So this is really the question that, um. I'm glad that Scotty asked, because Scotty allowed us to understand that I showed you guys the wrong line before. Um, so we block her here, right? Which we're supposed to do.
Right. Are, are you saying the sizing between your better flushes is gonna be different on the river? No, right, same.
Uh, repeat the question?
Like, uh, you said, the flush you have bet smaller than the better flushes on the river. I think it's, it's the same, right? It's different.
No, it's diff, it, it's different. I'll show you here.
Okay. I didn't expect that.
Yet another quality broker training video from the Friday study group.
That's right. We're drunk. Uh, yeah, so, yeah, we're betting smaller depending on the side. You can, you can see it here. Um, so these are all the flushes now represented at the top skate.
Right.
And you, and you see how it's a lighter color down here at the very bottom? These are our lowest equity flushes, right?
Thirty-four percent.
So our weaker flushes are betting a blocker sizing. Whereas our best flushes, which top at eighty-six percent on the fair board, which are gonna have the, come, have the king in them, your clubs. They're betting bigger. So there's a very linear. Bet sizing scheme here.
So now you, let's blocker bet and get raised by the quads. And see how often do you call?
Alright, so back to my, the mango. So if we, if we properly block a bet. I think we've, I think we're gonna fold this on paired board. His, he's. Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna shove.
Fold everything except.
And we'll start with the flushes. Yeah, our flushes are way shook. So we're even folding. King, jack, so break down. And then we'll just look at the, this is just the flushes, guys. So we're just calling with, there's gonna be some weird blocker stuff going on here.
But we make more money folding, I think.
Correct. So we're fo, we're mostly folding. And then there's some intense blocker, um. Full house blocking stuff going on here. So like six, four, we're probably calling with, because we're blocking sets of sixes. Six, four, we're calling, jack, four, blocking, I don't know what.
Not in low stakes.
Maybe we're blocking, great, alright. And then, yeah, and then our kings calling. But our, uh, we are folding ours. We're pure folding. So if you look at strategy. EV, look at ours. We're kind of indifferent, but we're folding. The only thing we're really happy calling is like the king. Our best calls are like king five, which we don't ever have, and king four. Making a chip, we're mostly folding. And we look at our range and then we'll call, we'll put this to bed. So our full range, yeah, we just. And then the, okay, well, this is interesting. When we have trips and we get here with trips, we're calling because we're blocking the house, which he is claiming to have. That is next level shit. Uh, and it's. Yeah, it's a big, it's a, it's a call because we're blocking, it's a big call. Because we're blocking, um. We're blocking so much of his, of his boats. Alright, guys.
Okay, you played it pretty well, Larry, actually. The shove on the, the shove on the river was the only real mistake.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're right. I mean, one of it was his mentalism, I'm saying, but.
Happens to the best of us.
Happened more often than you think.
Yeah, true. How do I stop sharing? I've lost my, oh, there it is. Stop sharing.
That's why I'm trying not to play on like cash.
Alright, guys, what do you, um, do we wanna have Mike show us some hands? Or do we wanna, uh, call it and meet in the new year?
Uh, Mike can show some in.
Mike, you still up for that?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna step away for a while, guys. I'll be back.
I have about a half hour remaining, so I'm more than happy to, uh, give us some hands here. Let me, uh, get the screen going.
Yeah, it looks like you've got plenty of, uh. Plenty of ticket buyer, so, alright, I'm gonna.
Uh, let me know you can see, should see, um, the replay and wizard. And, uh, just starting at a session here, uh, looks like it's a new table. We can. Skip through till we get some more players or can look at these heads up. I'm not too studying on heads up.
Heads up.
Okay, let's go through them, so.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's flop around wildly and blindly in the wind.
So this is a clear fold here. The ace king raises, we fold the eight two. Uh, jack eight button would be a raise in any, any scenario. We get three bet. This is. Again, this is where I'm like, I would be lost, but I'll just kind of roll through it just to let you see how we played it. Uh, called the jack eight suited, which. Probably heads up, I, I'm guessing it's fine, but I don't know. And we got a good flop to be able to just get the hell away, get out of here. It goes check, check. He did check his ace queen on there, which was interesting on that flop.
Yeah, probably because he had both, the heart and the diamonds blocking, you're continuing. I mean, or.
He's probably going for a check raise there. Give it to him.
Yeah.
I would have bet on that board.
And then, yeah, we get, we can get away from that. I think that's pretty easy. Uh, nine, seven, he raises, we fold. Next hand, queen four, just folding, I guess. See, this is where like pre-flop range is heads up. I'm probably way too tight, I'm guessing, but. Uh, this one might play itself out. Three bet. Queens on the button. You just flaps.
You gotta get spicy heads up.
Uh, interesting. Alright. It's on us. Any thoughts?
Right there, um. I think you have a good bluff catcher, so you don't have to. Continue raise, you can min thirty three, mix min thirty three or, uh, or check right there.
So give a, like a value bet, basically. You're still value betting continuation.
But no, most of his range won't have it. He can have a jack, he can have a pair like this. But, uh, he can have a ace ten, ace queen. He has a lot of miss too, so you. You, you min bet, most of the time you're gonna continue min bets, so I'll up for thirty three, uh, bet right there.
I went for a B seventy five.
What happened pre-flop? You, you bet they, they raised and you called?
Yeah, pre-flop, uh, I. They raised, I three bet and they flatted.
That, that, that's a reason why I will continue. Don't think, uh, you have to go that big. I will have go a fifty in that case. Just because you don't have a lot of draws, except the flush draw that he, he can improve. And you have the two overs, so. And now you. You, you're almost put committed. You have to call.
Think I just let that one go, like without any of the backdoors at all. I just, I just decided to get the hell out of there. But if you would continue there, set halves?
Yeah.
Even, even with the big bet?
Yeah, I will continue, see, see your turn, uh, check two is bet, uh, check the turn with all my range and, uh. See, see what he's doing in, on the river, because right there, you, you have to need to call on the one hundred pot and the, the expected is gonna be. You're gonna have fifty five, seven more, uh, for sure, so when you bet, uh, you. You're bet, almost bet for once on seven, and I will do it with a.
Yeah, yeah, because you're getting like great odds, like that hand to me is either a shove or fold.
Yeah, look at the, uh, look at the play there. The odds are like right exactly correct almost.
Yeah, it's either shove or fold, you just gotta go with it. Um, you know, if you had a club, better, but you don't have a club.
We, because when you, you're gonna check the turn, he's gonna shove.
Exactly, you're gonna fold, so that's why I say either fold or shove. Uh, shove or fold.
One of the things on that hand that's a little misleading. When it showed you your equity, that you were getting twenty three percent equity, um, for twenty two percent odd odds. Though that was equity to make it by the river. That included both cards. So in reality, a call that, you know.
You're gonna under realize.
And half that on a single call, yeah. Yeah. Because you're not, you know, uh. You're not getting to see both cards for that, for that bet.
Yeah, out of position, you're gonna realize quite a bit.
He's jamming, yeah, he's jamming.
That's why you gotta shove.
On the turn if you don't get there.
Yeah, but, uh, like I see, he. Any way he's gonna show, so you, you have the, you, you're sure to make this expected odds. So I, I, I add the, the, the remaining of his stack in the pot when I'm thinking this one. So, uh, that's why I have the odds to call. Right there.
But here's what I mean, so. The misleading thing is this, you look at there and you go, I'm getting twenty two percent, twenty two percent, and I've got twenty three percent equity. That's twenty three percent equity to the river. If you shove to get to the river, you put in more than that twenty two percent. Now you also have more money in there, you have this other fifty seven in there. Uh. But it's a, I, but a shove is a losing play here. A call is also a losing play, because when you don't hit an ace or a king on the turn. He shoves on the turn and now you, and now you don't have the odds to call on the.
Yeah, you have to fold on the, on, on the turn, but, uh, when he's gonna, he's going to, if you.
So even though it doesn't look as bad as it is, you gotta fold.
I mean, true, I mean, I would have played as aggressive, but as played, I mean. I mean, I, I, I would have folded. I wouldn't have been as big, but whatever.
Cool, because remember, it's just, it, he doesn't have to have queen, queen for it to be this bad. Jack, Jack ten is just as bad. Ace seven is just as bad, ace seven is worse. He hasn't. Makes sense?
Don't think you have ace seven when he three bets like this.
Yeah, um, I'm just saying, any pair, any pair. Is, is terrible for you.
Yeah.
And ace jack is the worst thing, ace jack is just, is the worst thing in the world, and he could have ace jack.
True.
I don't know if this would, uh, if this is gonna be similar, but, um. We, we could do like a. Button versus big blind here. I know it's not heads up and there's a small blind that's missing, but. Um, we wanna see if there's any insight to wizard.
The wizard, the wizard has a G T O, has a, has a heads up solver. You can go heads up.
You can.
Yeah.
But only pre-flop, right?
I don't know. Let's find out.
Yeah, I think it's only. Pre-flop, or at least. At least the, uh, version that I've paid for, I'm pretty sure.
Let's see.
Let's make it no limit. Twenty five, I guess. So they raise their queens. We three bet to twelve. With the ace king and they flat the queens. Yeah, okay, I can't do this one. So it would, we would have to use the six max button versus. Big blind, which I, I'm thinking it wouldn't be too far off, right?
Best do.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's too far off, because when you have ace, king and queens, it's gonna play similarly to this.
Of course, he shouldn't be flattening the. Queens there, of course. But for us. So our ace king. Mostly checks, but does have some larger size betting.
With a club. Or. Not, not even, well, yeah, with a club.
Yeah, prefers the club for sure, yep. Yeah, that's a, that's a big distinction.
Yeah, ace king. Like overrated for me. I, I see myself checking this board a lot. Especially no club.
And then there, they do a little. Small raise. And, uh, our ace king. Is just kinda indifferent across the board. Yeah, pretty much indifferent across the board. Obviously prefers, well, prefers the king of clubs as opposed to the ace of clubs. Okay. But yeah, that flop checks seventy percent of the time there. You're right, skate.
And I'm guessing that it prefers the king of clubs, because it wants you to be on an ace, it wants the opponent. To be raising the nut flush draw. Because when it doesn't get there, the ace king is good.
Alright. Eight, six. Folding it up there. They've, oh, they raised the queen deuce, of course, we're folding the nine, four. Uh, Jack, four. Stop if you see something that you don't like. King four suited for the opponent is a raise, pocket fives, pure call, I would imagine. They go pot, that, does that make it easy on us or do we continue?
It's a tough one. Um. Do you know anything about the opponent?
No, this is like, uh, probably like five or six hands in.
Hmm. So. Paired board.
Almost seems like you have to call here with a pair, right?
Yeah, I think you have to call the pair because. On a paired board, it misses so much of his range. Now it gets interesting. Let's see if he trap checks, which he should do, as some frequent saying.
He did, he trapped checks. Do we bluff?
Uh, blocker bet. I would blocker here a lot.
Yeah, me too. I agree.
Does a blocker get an ace to fold?
I hope. They go full pot.
Double pair board, maybe not.
Bye sixteen big blinds. Bye, 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 bye sixteen big blinds.
That's a big.
Yikes, okay. That's a, that's, yeah, so blockers, we, we, we're thinking blockers good here, it's like, so like a B five. B six, B seven.
Maybe not, maybe I'm wrong about that, because it's a double pair board. What are you representing? I think, I think, actually, I take back the blocker. I think it's an error.
So just check and fall, just be done with it?
I think, well.
Is this bad, terrible? Is this really bad?
You have no, I think you, I think, no, I think that. You, you've been counterfeited, so I think that, I think bluffing is fine.
The blocker, I think, for may fold the queen, jacks, uh. Uh, that need to be fold, uh. And maybe remove everything that you will have shop with, like a pocket six, seven, eight, nine, uh, and but not nine, but, uh. Uh, and they hold a small and like eight, seven of clubs, uh, and shit like this.
Yeah, so putting pressure on all of their, what they would chop with if it would just check through.
Yeah, that's why you, you know, thirty three, exactly for, for this, because it's gonna be hard for him to call with the queen. Right there, or a jack.
Yeah.
But the ace, I don't, I think blocker bet's not gonna make full up an ace kicker, so.
Alright.
Um, alright, ace, queen, raise, and we're getting some defense here. I don't know if at this point. We've noticed anything. If they're. Uh, they've.
He hasn't, he hasn't folded a thing, heads up.
Yeah, right. So we're, I, maybe we're starting to get an idea that, uh. Seems like a pretty easy flop to bet here.
Yep.
Okay, queen, jack, our queen five go away. Jack three suited. Heads up. Probably a raise, I'm thinking.
Yep, I would even think that that six, eight offsuit was a raise. That we folded earlier. Heads up, but. I mean, just because heads up is so terrible.
You know, we can actually look at the ranges. Let's get a quick look at.
The range, the ranges, we, we are. They might have, I don't know if they have a living range, the ones I use. So G T O base does not have a living range, heads up, just has a raise. Because you're in position. And so, and see what, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Look at, look at this all in here. That six, eight is well within it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're really, I mean, we're.
Yeah, we folded, we folded the queen. Yeah, we folded queen three. We folded Jack six, I think, earlier.
It's not, yeah, I think this is all about having positional advantage, a hundred big points deep. Gives you a big advantage.
Yeah, I mean, so, real quick, so I, I would. Now that we've just seen this, let's go back to the first hand and just jam through them and just look and see of our folds, what, how bad they were. What they were like. You know, not play out the hands, just look at them.
Yeah, so I folded eight, six, right?
Yeah, right.
We don't defend nine, four suited, I wouldn't imagine.
No, no, I'm sure we don't, but we'll, we'll, let's look, we'll, we'll bring that up.
Four, Jack four is gonna be in there.
Yeah, Jack four is in there. I mean, of course, queen five is in there.
Is it a defend?
No, no. I don't think so.
Uh, Jack three, we know is in there. We get to play this one. This is where we left off.
Right.
What's your thoughts?
C bet, check.
I'd, I would like this as a C bet. I like the ace. And we have, uh, two backdoors. And an overcard to the nine.
Yep, no, thirty three or blocker bet twenty, uh, sometime you're sizing, I will use.
Good job, hero.
Alright.
What, good turn to card.
Now we gotta bet.
Yeah, for sure.
Size?
I'm betting like three and a half, um, because I didn't bet the flop.
You, you're going like B seventy five, B sixty six.
Yeah, it's not gonna go well for me, but I am gonna do it.
Seventy five. Nope.
I checked, yeah, I'm not playing well, guys.
Right, but it wasn't gonna work, so there's that.
Alan.
Oh, man. Alright, now we got some, we're getting the more of, uh.
Yeah. Poker.
Alright, so the ten, where we at? We got a poster. And it really should just kinda get around to these two players if the, uh, big blind. Decides, well, the five, eight wants to give it. Now, I think this is our, this is our. Previous opponent.
Mm-hmm.
At this point. But. That should take it, which it does not. We'll just play this one out since we're kind of way off the reservation. The open ender. Get it done.
Yep.
Uh, king, queen. Ace nine should raise and. Pretty sure I don't. Ace five is a defend for.
I think ace five is a defend against the cutoff, yeah.
Okay.
I'll check that right now.
Ace five off. Um, yeah, yeah. Ace nine off, kinda. A little bit wide.
Uh, we're gonna check. Check range here, I would imagine there.
Oh, I'm, I'm wrong about, I'm wrong. Ace five is, ace five is defend by raising half the time, no calling.
Alright. Ace, uh, ace five off, it wants to call suited? Better, right?
Uh, uh, suited. Suited ace five, yeah, it wants to call ace five suited, and it wants to bluff ace five suited, I mean, ace five offsuit about a third of the time.
Okay.
Yeah, I just knew ace five was in there, but I didn't realize how it was in there. So.
Yep, there it is.
It's a better, better fold than a call, but here you are.
Better fold than a call.
Now, um, do you think there's any reason, because this is our previous opponent, we've seen that his stats are pretty high. Having played heads up. Do we change anything?
No, because it was, those are his heads up stats. They could be, if he studied heads up like we haven't. His stats should be completely different.
Yeah. He checks back his ace nine. Goes check, check on a turn. And we're probably gonna lose some money here. She's gotta call, right?
I guess.
No reason to fold, right?
Nope, gotta call.
Yeah, bluff catch.
Queen nine, little too early or little, still too early for queen nine?
Yes. Yeah, ready for queen nine off suit.
So we got a battle of a limper. And they go check, check, flop, check, check, turn, a lot of passiveness here, which is pretty standard for. N L fifty. Um, well, the king six should raise. We'll get three bet. The, the, the little min three bet. So they should, I would imagine they're just gonna call. Who knows what these players are gonna do at this point?
Nobody knows.
Yeah, right. Uh, queen, jack off on, in the hijack can raise, and that should take it. Well, with the min raise, do we defend king nine? Well, we've got a small blind defend. How about defending now with the king nine off?
I think I can tell. No, you, you, you had the, the options close, the, yeah, the action, maybe a bit loose, but I think it's, I think it's a call. I'm not sure what the solver will say, but it's multi-ways, and often the solver become a far tighter.
And should the queen jack bet here? I would, I would say yes. Thirty percent, B thirty-three?
Yeah.
And that should get it done. Uh, ace five in the cutoff? Scotty, I know you, you're kind of the ace five wizard.
I don't like it.
Is this that position where it's ace five and then you skip ace, six and seven and go right to ace eight?
I think with a, with a pair like this, it's okay to call when it goes the no-tire way.
Yeah, the cutoff is that where it wants to bring you in with that ace five?
It has some fold there, too.
Uh, how about your sevens in the small blind to that, to the raise? You, would you ever squeeze sevens?
Right.
I think it has to be nines plus.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't squeeze it. Personally, the old son, you know, when you go multi-way, you, you lit or you fold.
Now, obviously, the button should not have ace two. Uh, but here's your wizard, here's your, uh, solver with sevens.
Yeah, likes nines plus.
Yep, nines plus for sure.
Let's go.
Slivers of, of the little, of the smaller pairs. I think I would have a tendency to, uh, squeeze those a little more.
Look at ten, nine. That's crazy. And nine suited.
And I, I don't think eight, nine should defend here now.
It, it, the fact is, if you don't, never have a calling range from your small blind, this play become useless, but if you have somewhat a good calling range with a good ace suited, ace suited days and, uh, pockets like this and, uh, can add some maybe, uh, suited connectors, uh, you're gonna be for better calling, but if you don't, you, you raise or fold will be better against a good opponent. Against bad player, calling is just fine.
Yeah, and, uh, Dean makes a point, too, that if we see the opponent on the button is calling hands like, like he's calling with there, that we should squeeze, we should squeeze more.
Yeah, but still you have the pre-flop razor that has raised from cutoff, uh, I don't think this squeeze is the great idea right there. Ju- just remove, just make fold the, the bottom and just watch what your range does against the cutoff. Uh, in GTO, is it?
Oh, uh, you're saying?
Just make fold the, the bottom.
Okay.
And watch what your, your range going to do right there. You, you, you're gonna raise, because GTO assumed that you're against a great player, a good player, so is gonna raise mostly for everything. Even the pocket eight fold, you start really raising at nines.
Yeah.
Because he's gonna know that you, you're gonna have expected a, a good player like the solver is gonna know, uh, that you're calling what you're expecting and, and, uh, you're gonna have our time getting value from it when you just call. That's why you're gonna start raising when you're against a good player, but bad player is gonna call, call, call anyway, so.
Um, has, has anybody gone through the multi, multiplayer s- segment of the advanced cash course on poker coaching?
Nope.
Have you spent some time in that?
Yeah, yeah, I have. And this is interesting here on this particular flop and where the raise came from. So. See what happens here. I'm sure, so this, this bet would be kind of like a good bet, this continuation bet with this flop.
Hmm.
Um, they, he was, they were talking about using some of these like bottom pairs and and, and that sort of thing, a lot more than you would in a heads up pot. But if you ever get a chance, check it out, because it's some good info.
Okay.
Um, but it certainly wouldn't be intuitive to me.
Yeah.
Um. But he gets that one through. Uh, we have a poster. And. And a limper.
So it's interesting, I, again, it's interesting to look at equities here, right? And then you, you're in close second here with seven, six suited multi-way.
Yeah. You just kind of take a flop with this, or do you ever try to, uh, ISO? Or steal?
I have, I think if you're going to ISO, you've got to make it really big. Because you don't want to take it multi-way after you've invested six big blinds in the pot.
Yeah.
Um, I, so what, so five plus six, seven, eight, so like, I was gonna, I said it'd be like to eight. But this is not the worst hand to take multi-way. I don't think I'm finding an ISO with this, frankly. I'm trying to flop well. What do you guys think? Dean, what are you doing?
With six, seven?
Dean's all about the ISO. What size would you use this deep?
I, I don't think you have to, uh, you, you complete and then see if you return up.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a complete, it's just a call, right?
Yeah, just a complete, uh, uh, what I said, it's you call the raise.
So Dean says, I like having board coverage. So essentially, so his isis aren't just broadways, suited broadways and overpairs. Makes sense.
So we got an interesting bet from the button here, who's a short stack, by the way, and.
Can you go back? Let's just look at what your, your equity versus pot odds are here against the baby bet.
Oh, against his bet?
Yeah, against his one big blind bet. So let's, so you're now getting seventeen percent. And you've got eighteen percent equity, but you've got people behind. Yeah, I don't mind folding it, but it's just interesting to look and see how little equity we need to continue to this size bet. Which essentially is just a B twenty-five.
And that's against somebody who has king five, right? I mean, we can see that, what cards they have. This isn't our equity versus a range.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's just, but it's a good point. It's just interesting to see. Um.
Right.
How little.
If he did, made this bet, show us he has king five, then you could potentially make a call, right?
Yeah, 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 good point.
Um, ten, ten. Should raise. Well, now should ISO.
Yeah, it should be like a, I'd go like four and a half, right? It's kind of our agreed upon number.
Yeah. Four and a half is pot. Uh, ace, queen on the button with, uh, sixty big blinds.
This is interesting, it's who he does.
I know if it was me, I would, well, if I got here with sixty big blinds, I don't know, would I be more likely to just flat or should we uh, three bet? But he flats.
Can you go back to, to you? Let's just see what your equity is versus. You're seventeen percent. Yeah, still good fold.
I would, I would almost consider squeezing to, against two good players.
You're capable of folding?
Yeah, who are, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Against players who are here to see fluffs, it's a different story.
Alright, so the tens, we get a jack high flop.
I don't mind just checking here.
Uh, Dean asked if it was a three big blind open and a call, would you squeeze? I, I feel like I would squeeze fairly frequently. Not all the time, but I think I would probably do it against two players that I know who are pretty decent, raising normal ranges. I think I would. In this particular configuration, I wouldn't, just because of the short, shortest stack and the bigger size raises because of the ISO. Uh, went check, check. Ace, queen. Hmm, I think the, uh, button missed the value bet there, of course.
Yeah. Oops.
Next hand. This would be a wa- well, we've got, look at this. So just a bunch of limping. This is a nine-handed table. I didn't realize this is a nine-handed table.
So you've hit kind of like the painter table here.
Right.
Sit around and wait for a good hand and hope your equity holds.
I mean, uh, we, we're seeing some of the stuff we see when Scotty plays his nine-handed tables. I've started, oh, it's funny, because I have started playing these nine-handed tables as an add-on to the other three.
Uh-huh. Yeah, they, they are significantly softer. I've done the same on global.
And you can see what, what happens.
Yep.
Alright, we got ace, king should raise, ace, queen on the button versus an early position min raise.
I think it gets to fold at some frequency.
Well, e- even against a min raise?
Well, that's changed it probably, but.
Dean's, Dean's three betting.
Um, so let's say cutoff hijack, lowjack. So that's, is this full eight-handed?
It is lowjack plus two, so it's eight-handed.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you don't get to fold. I'm, I'm being a nit.
Oh, and I can't, I can't use, um, opening size. Oh, there we go. We can, we can get to a min bet. So our button range here, ace, queen does kind of.
Yeah, I was being nitty.
Shoot. Um, so yeah, three bet or, or flat. I was curious if there were flats here. Um. Oh, his, oh, he's got, oh, look at, yeah, Dean makes a good point here. He, he's a broken stack. He's only got four big ones.
So it gets a broker circle. I think I, I'm, I think three bets good.
Yeah, me too.
And then he just put it in.
Yep. And then, yeah, you're just gonna get it in at that point. Um, does that broken sack, um, watch you do three bet it more or maybe flat it more?
I think that you still want a three bet, because I don't think you're motivated to take this hand multi-way. But maybe you can talk about a trap call with like ises and kings. Generally, I don't think you want to take, and maybe there's other hands you want to take multi-way. But I think this hand, you don't particularly want to take multi-way.
Yeah.
Even though you're playing on a button.
Alright, ace, sevens a little early. From the cutoff, right? You said a little early, or is that right on the cut?
I think it's, I think it's like ace, eight, ace nine.
Plus you have this poster. Who checks. So now you have queen eight and nine, seven. Just, uh, some odd situations.
Yeah, this is a weird one.
Gotta beach.
Get weird.
A strange. Um, fours in the hijack. Well, we got a limper. So now I think fours in the hijack is, I know wizard likes to fold a lot of it and raise a small percentage of it. Um, but do we, we have a, a limper and a poster, or did, or is it two limpers?
It's two limpers. So I, what are you guys doing here? So I want to ISO here, but I, I end up calling more than I should probably.
Or with the four, uh, calling for sure, not even knowing why you want to ISO with the four. It's, it's the kind of hand that, uh, wants to it or for, when, when you have some limper like this, uh, uh, call back and, uh.
Well, the argument for ISOing is that, I mean, it's a bluff ISO, right? But the argument is that you're isoling two, I mean, we could see how cap these ranges are. You're isoling two cap ranges and you get to, we're up to the very top of your range. Um, the one argument set apps is that we are too early, which we see is the result of the button flattening, because we're isoling too early and we're, this ISO is a little bit too small. Ace ten was probably gonna flat a lot anyway.
Now you're in a mess. You gotta worry about the big line and the button.
Yeah, so now this is getting interesting. I think I would, I would fuck for it, so. You're not really good at the odds to call. He's ready to roll, though.
Yeah. Um, here's a question for you. Assume we limped behind here, okay? So um, assume we limp here with fours to get in the pot and even if ace ten just limps behind or folds, whatever, and we get to, and we're in the big blind with king, queen, and we have four limpers. We're, uh, we're ISO, I'm, I'm isoling this almost all the time. Is that, anybody else do anything different if we have king, queen in the big blind versus four or five limpers?
I am isoling it. I, I, a lot of it, it, I mean, it's a bluff ISO, but it's got really good blockers, right?
Yeah, can you wear, uh, uh, his move is right, the sizing, uh, it's a bit big, but okay.
What about shoving, uh, pre-flop his hat?
Oh, no, no, no.
I mean, you could, do get shows pre-flop when you face a three bet with ace, king off, out of position, but not with this combo.
Okay, ace, king, yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I just, I don't find this, uh, I don't like playing this hand with love, but, um, um, yeah, I, I like the ISO.
Yeah, but you ISO to, it's a three bet bluff, because you need, wh- when you three bet like this, you don't, no one in your range to be aces, king and ace, king, uh, you want to have some man that if you get four bet, five bet, but you, you let them go, uh, and this is the perfect candidate for this, I think. Ace, jack and a king, queen are just perfect for that.
Okay, o- offsuit.
All right, because you don't want to get fold from a suited king, with king, queen and a suited ace, jack. So most of the time when you do this for bluff, it's gonna be your offsuit range, or you can do it with a, in like ace, five suited.
What about king, queen suited, ace, jack suited, what are you?
You prefer to, you prefer to call because, uh, uh, of the value of your hand. You don't want to, uh, to get kick out of the hand with a, and that's true, with the potential with it, but at the same time, you don't want, uh, at the same time, you, you're out of position, so you, you're gonna have a hard time playing your hand anyway, so. And you prefer it goes multi-way if you're gonna hit a flush or you're gonna hit two pair or so, things like this, a string.
That makes sense.
So we talked about s- like, um, isoling or stealing with king, queen if everybody limps. How about in this situation, were you guys just discussing this, where you get a raise?
Yeah, I was just good to sing with the, with the raise of four big blinds. But not with king, queens, I wouldn't have called. But not with king queens, I wouldn't have called like this end is perfect where two or four or three bet bluffs.
I I feel like uh when the fours made it four big blinds, it's kind of small, like considering the limp party, like aren't. Aren't they just gonna call more often than not? Or four is a good side?
No, his ISO, his ISO is too small.
Too small, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, with all with um.
Yeah, I didn't see that the bottom call, but with the bottom call, I think you should go at twenty two or twenty four, something like this.
And that, I think that's a mistake.
Too big.
Definitely.
Only getting called by better.
Um, looks like the ace three should open. But you know, we have.
Per- personally, his bed sizing is not that wrong. The wrong part is that his bed sizes is wrong for his stack depth. On the flop. I think he he don't have enough behind to make this bet. That's why it's it's wrong to to do it, but with a board that has some drills on it. It's good to eh to increase your basic sizing, but maybe eh. Right there, I will go eh half button, something like twenty four to twenty eight. And after shove.
So we limp limp behind the short stack, limp behind.
Uh, it's okay to fold. He could, he could have a complete two, but um we find that for with someone who fold from the small blind that this kind of him. He's three eyes to call back when he is a limb, no need to eh. Yeah, he saw with an like this that eh. Run poorly, a post flop if he don't hit a flush. Now he hit us, his trips about eh. The time is gonna, the trip is gonna be rare.
And he slow plays it with. Oh, well, here we go. Does he just now or does he jam? Yep, he jams. He got full value.
That's what happens in these these limp pots. Anybody could have the trips.
Uh, this is gonna be interesting, man.
Ace king should raise, uh queen should three bet. They they flat. And he's got a broken stack. And then, oh, hello. King deuce comes along, pocket deuces comes along. At that point, that that's probably not too bad. Of course, he has a broken stack. Everybody's got a broken stack. Jeez, okay.
Let's look at your equity here, multi way. So you're in the second place, right? Yeah, you're in second place.
Okay. Here we go.
Yeah, you're first.
Yeah, boy. All right, what what are we thinking here?
Jeez, that's a good question. So.
Yeah.
We can. Um hmm, it's too much to wait to check. Maybe we could size down. You have the ace of clubs.
You have big chance to get that drone.
Yeah. We don't wanna, we don't wanna size down too much, but we don't wanna size up, so I don't know.
Thirty three percent less than the better.
I wonder if this is a good check raise spot.
What if, what if it goes check, check, check all the way in and do some return?
I don't think it's the worst.
Yeah, you're pretty protected, right?
Yeah, I mean, especially with the ace of clubs.
Actually, I wasn't watching the hand. I don't know what happened pre flop and.
The problem I have with this is when he goes so much for no tie win, we should check more in our our range. But right there, you have stop care pair, top kicker eh with some draws on the board, I think I will.
Yeah.
Just to see how the players react to him. Because if you check back, they all checking back and you see a turn and on the turn, you're sure to. You're in a, you will be in a tough spot if you don't hit another ace or king.
So I mean, so Jaffe's argument is that checking reveals a lot of information, right? So. If we check there. We understand a lot about our opponent's ranges by their betting patterns. Um, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna fold three, assuming everybody doesn't go in, go all in. But I like checking here because. You're gonna learn something and you're also gonna catch people buffing. I really like a check raise.
With ace king?
Yeah, I like a check raise, especially with these clubs.
Dude, ah, I just feel like it's too multi way.
I can see that. I can see your point.
Maybe like three, uh, I would like.
And there's always, you're right, there's always a risk you can get out drawn. Okay, so now is, I would, yeah, I would check races to like. Ten, like ten.
Yeah, and thi- theory wise, I think you're supposed to check a lot, like rear rank, like basically check range, I think.
Yeah.
But, you know, theory goes out the window, I, when.
When it's this, when it's like six ways, yeah.
Yeah, it's ultra multi way, four ways, three ways is like, yeah. I can get on board two ways.
Yeah, man. We're mind melding on this one, dude. We'll still see how the rest of the handcuffs.
I I'm guessing the size here is because of the uh um broken stack.
Yeah, yeah, you got, you're only got broken stacks here.
I'm starving. I'm just rambling on.
Hey, good skate.
Okay, the twos came along.
What? He's got nine percent equity. All right, and he's got, so I would just put him in. Maybe not with the ace of clubs. What are you doing here, skate? I might, I think I wanna milk a little bit. You go to like fifteen.
Now, we, of course, we don't realize he has pocket deuces, right? We've, we're thinking his range is gonna include ace, some aces. It's gonna include some nines, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, he's good. And we're also, I mean, and also we're going to be trying to wanna um to a flush sometimes. He's gonna have sets. Sometimes. I would be thinking sets often after he checked, he calls the check raise. Um, and you're right, I could be influenced by being able to see the cards. So. I, but I don't think I'm ever, I mean, the SPR is one. I don't, I don't think I shove. I think, I think with the ace of clubs, I think I I milk him a little bit. And also these, well, these clubs is also blocking.
They're calling range uh pre flop up right with the ace. Um. Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm with you, like, I would size and on the smaller side.
I was gonna say, if we bet, do we, do we, can we bet a small size?
I think we can with his stack. I mean, so we're, we essentially we've got a one SPR one.
Yeah.
And we want to, and it's kind of like fish on the line, you know? I I wish I didn't see his hand. I I would feel like I'm being very influenced by what he has, but. I I I know our hand's got shit ton of equity. We're drawing to the nuts and got top top, so. I I like a beef, a beef, uh, B thirty here. I like betting ten big ones.
But personally, when the the eight comes, equal as the love, even if you block with the ace of club. You still block the flush door and most of your range gonna slow down, so I think this check is great. Because it's gonna introduce into bet.
I think so too, like, hmm. Like, when he ca- when he calls a check raise, like, he's continuing, I mean, we're blocking the ace, so he's most likely continuing with a. Lust draw or something like that?
He should not have what he has. He should have like.
Yes.
A pair, a straw.
Yeah.
Ten, seven, ten, eight. Eh, maybe two pair nine, six.
So he's, so obviously you're not folding that.
Nope.
Only question is if you put them all in.
You can, you can call two and bring, keep the bluffs in.
You don't need to because you have the, I don't know, uh, I just call.
Yeah, maybe you call with the ace of clubs.
Yeah, you don't need protection.
Then we're out of position on the river, right? Do we? Do we, are there scare cards that prevent, like, when we get to river, are we just donking everything? Do we just, no matter what?
I like it, I think you should put them all in here.
Yeah, a a ten would suck, a five would suck.
I mean, this is awesome. I mean, you got him in with five percent equity and that's like, this is the dream.
What do you call? What's wrong with this guy?
Wow, you, I, I wish you'd taken that on this player, right?
Maybe skate, the question is, what what's wrong with me that I'm not playing on ignition?
Yeah, yeah, me, I can't, I can't play on the nation because I would start right away.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's, that kind of hand is just ridiculously rare, like even with, you know, when you get the occasional fish type of thing, that having a. Five way flop. Is just ridiculous.
It's like worse, worse than live, this this slide here.
I wonder why ignition is so soft because it's not like it's easy to play on, right? Like global's easy to play on. You could just use a credit card. But you gotta put effort into ignition, right? You've gotta have crypto, gotta put the crypto on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a pain in the ass.
I have, I'm just curious, it's so soft.
Ace jack um starts off with a raise here, ace queen off to a what looks like lowjack plus undergun plus two or whatever you wanna call it. Um.
But even entities, they're not just, just cash entities too, um, you know, on initiation, I see so much sixes of stream. And it's weak compared what I play on poor on stars or on GG on eh. It's, it's, so I ACR, these sit, I have much stronger range. You go play a cash game on eh on GG and eh. Most of the player has a VIP of eighteen eh. Or sometime twenty five because it's a six ended, but. Players as good, uh, all have uh good stats and eh. You don't have those kind of player playing fifty percent of their range and eh calling with pocket deuce.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, this is, this is very soft.
And again, this is the nine handed tables. Um, I I don't see it on the six max, like I don't see that level of fishiness. Eh in the six max, it's pretty crazy the difference.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing, one of the many things I've learned from these sessions is that I wanna play on non max table.
I like six max. You see more hands.
Yeah, but you, I mean, so skate the argument for playing on nine max, just look at the kind of players.
True.
So you're just gonna make more money.
Where Lee, I prefer to play nine max.
Um, so ace queen, I think here, you can, I think you can fold this sometimes, uh, early position versus early position.
Yeah, if we had a full stack, I I think I would probably three bet this almost all the time, but I. Think you're right that it may, what is that low? That's under the gun plus whatever, what plus one?
Yeah, UTG versus UTG one. So UTG raises on this at NL fifty, right? We've got NL fifty. What's UT? Oh, is it that late? I thought it was, I thought it was earlier. Sorry, misread the position. Cut off hijack, lowjack, UTG one versus shit. Yeah, okay. I guess you play it. And you're supposed to raise it.
There's, there is some folding there.
Yeah.
Um.
I I think the worst thing to do with this hand here is call. I mean, I have some flats in position. Because I don't think people three bet as much as Silver, but I think this is not one of them. I think I either three better fold this. Depending if I know anything about the the villain.
Forty big blind stack, uh, you guys play tournaments, is this any kind of? Like, just flat or?
Well, it all changes in tournaments because. You have antis, so you've got more money to fight over and there's no ring.
And eh there's a two that there's ICM spot, so when you're near getting in the money, you have to tighten up your range. You you have to think if you have the, in ICM spot, the low, the low stack and middle stack is gonna tie it up. So when you're big stack, you have to open your range and there's some adjustment that you don't have like this eh. In carrying.
Yeah, and I I definitely was referring to like early, early stage, like where you're, you may not have any ICM implications or.
I think you often will flat this uh because of antis, so you have a lot more to fight over. And then also because there's.
Yeah, but personally.
Right, so that that greatly affects your range.
Even in tournament, this is queen, I don't flat behind.
Yeah, sure.
You you three bet for sure, that's a bad play and the king nine isn't, that's a bad play. You you you, no, but you want to, you want to call with expected dead. Odds then, not eh, you have no odds with a off suit then like this, eh, it's bad.
So the ace queen does change value here because a lot of the reason you're folding ace queen this early is a verse applied odds. Uh, and that's not as much an issue here. I had forty picks.
Yeah, Dean says that in attorney, you want to raise the offsuit more because. It's not as good post flop and you rather take the blinds and antis. In cash, you're trying to get stacks.
I think Dean's got a good point.
Let me ask you guys this, let, so ace jack opened, and let's say that ace queen off, uh, three bet. Now, what is ten supposed to do in the cutoff?
Fold, dude, you gotta fold it. You can forfeit bluff it, you can call for bluff it, but you can't fight.
Can I fight? Okay.
Yeah, to those early positions, I think tens would be a, there might be some, some four betting, but I bet it's mostly fold. Obviously, the king nine's terrible. Um, tens here. Might be a little ambitious to um three bet this, three bet squeezed, but.
I don't mind it because of all the dead money.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think it's.
So all the dead money and you've got two uh cap ranges, right?
True.
I feel like I would just lap behind here with all of that, but.
Uh, ma- maybe tens is like um, is like cusp, I mean.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have uh. Won't have charts for this because we don't have this many flats in reality, but.
Yeah.
No, I like, I like the three bet. I really like the the three bet in position eh with eh and. Hmm, now you have some value. It's not like playing seven, you you play eh tens. Then I think at start at ten, nine, ten, around these, and you can start to betting for for some value eh. More seven is too weak, you're you're gonna get drawn too much, but right there, let's say the flop is nine, seven, two. You're, you're in really good shape right now.
What you're looking at here is what we were talking about just a little bit earlier. If the ace queen had three bet. And we're on the, in the cutoff with tens, this is your cutoff range in wizard. But you can see tens are.
This can, now you're, you're against the two on cap range, you you have to. Take that in con- consideration.
What, what, what's queens though in folding, folding, raising there?
Yeah, they're, they're folding sixty percent of the time or or folding forty percent of the time, which is crazy.
Yes.
But again, that's against all, if they're considering they were all really good players.
Yeah. And for sure, if I did three bet, I count, I I don't for bet, but I don't fold tens eh against bad player like this.
I don't mind it. If I had more information like the PFR, uh, for example, sized up with value hands and. You know, his, his usual open was two, then yeah, I could see ten here.
Uh, so we saw what happened. We got the ten tens did a three bet, the ace jack flatted, which probably is not very good to flat that. Um, and then the ace queen folded and he's on that broken stack. Um, and then the ace queen folded and he's on that broken stack.
So would you, what would you do with this jack? Would you? Uh, fold?
I think I would fold not closing the action.
I can understand that. Yeah, we can't really solve it. How about his queen suited?
Probably too nitty, but you know, again, if, if these, if we've been playing a while and we see what these players have been doing, maybe flating is just fine.
Um, well, I think the solver is gonna make the argument a lot that it likes a. Flat. With the suited variety because it's easier to continue. Uh, if you have a backdoor. Um, but I think. I think a fault is fine with ace jack, but I would definitely flat. I would call. Ace queen soon. Alright, so now this is getting interesting. He's got kind of a dream plot for his combo. Barring having a ten. So it's size he chooses and also what's his S P R? Yeah, he's just going for it. Wants protection from overcall. Now, let's see if ace jack does a freak out. Cause I think sometimes, you know, I think sometimes people freak out in three rep pods. Cause the adrenaline's flowing. Stakes are bigger. They're ready to gamble sometimes.
Feel like his bet is a little big, like it should be a small on the small size.
I agree. This is ridiculous. I don't think you, I think his, a larger sizing makes sense. With his combo. But this is too big. I think that I would. I think I would, I think I can get behind a B fifty, but I don't think I can get behind, what, just like a B seventy, B seventy five. I can't, I think this is too big.
I mean, cause you just don't have, you don't have the nut advantage here at all, right? I mean.
Well, you do have the nut advantage because. You do. Well, I guess, no, I should say that. So this is a, okay, let's think about what his range is. So his U T G. He does, I think you're right. He does have the nut advantage, but they come off basic. Because. He does have nines and eights at a certain frequency. Um, I don't know if it's opening sevens that early, but yeah, I think you're right about the nut advantage. And I think, I think, yeah, I think on. In theory, this is a good flop for the.
Yes, you.
Out of position, three back caller.
On this board, I think it's okay to bet this big. For some, um, but right there with tense, the problem is that you block the nuts.
Ten jack?
Uh, yeah, I think his sizing is based on wanting, is based on equity protection here, equity now rather.
Cause most of the time on this board, when you got equity like an aces and king. But now it's a complete equity, so you, you're gonna say it's down anyway, but. Let's see, remove the seven and let's see, it's nine, eight and, um. Nine, eight and five and four. Now you're in a flush door, now you have a, a hand that has some draws on it. And at the same time, now you, you want to be that big. But now, the problem is that you block what you will be slowing down because, because you block a jack then right there.
I, I, I think he's betting for protection. I think, um, like this, this player probably understands that. The most, most of the limping range from players is gonna be suited broadways.
I don't think this wasn't only part.
Yeah, but, but you.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're not gonna get cow skied by, uh, uh, anything than a flush door, straight and or, uh. Two pairs. So even if you bet thirty three, he's not gonna call you with, uh, with this one. Or maybe for bluff because he got the catch up, but let's say he has ace queen of club, he's not calling, uh. A bet on the, on the flop, uh, thirty three.
Alright guys, I'm gonna take off. I'm gonna wish you all happy new year. And, uh, I will talk to you on Tuesday.
Thanks, Larry. Happy new year. See you guys next year.
Yeah, I really appreciate this, uh, session. It's a good session, guys. We'll talk to you next year.
Yes, happy new year and I thank you for the session, Larry.
Oh, no worries, man. Bye bye.
Happy new year. I'll see you guys on Tuesday.
Wait, I'm host. I gotta make, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm gonna make you host, Mike. I'm sorry.
Larry, that's okay, cause it's six o'clock P M here and it's a good time to stop.
Okay, alright. Oh, man, I broke up the party.
Sorry. Careful, Larry, but at some point you need to put this up.
Should we finish out this hand and see how it ends then?
Oh, let's, yeah, let's just run it out here. Let's see. I think he just folded. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, guys, um, well, I'll talk to you the new year.
May the poker gods be with you all.
Yeah, you as well.
Thank you. I'll grab some food.